Okay, are we ready to go? Alex?
Give me one second.
Absolutely.
All right, I believe I'm ready to start whenever you are.
Okay, let's do it. Hi, everyone, I'd like to call to order the Malibu City Council regular meeting of April 12th, 2021. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and we appreciate it once patients while we navigate the Zoom meeting process. Council members and city staff are participating from a remote locations and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or sign up to speak on particular items. You'll only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions at malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed, so please make sure you visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application if needed. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Council members, if you have comments to make during this meeting, please raise your hand, and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Fair?
Here.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Here.
Councilmember Uring?
Here.
Mayor Pratim Gristanti?
Here.
Mayor Pearson?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Couple things here on the agenda. I think we hopefully all agreed to adjourn in memory of Mike Trainan, and I'd like to add too, and the four people that have been killed by cars in the last month in the city, and those names have not yet been released. And as well, since this men, I'm sorry, this agenda is super packed with a lot to get to, I'd like to suggest we move 2B and 2C to the end, so we can try and get more items done. I don't think we should take any items after 11 o'clock tonight either, any new items? So I don't know, I'd like, those are my thoughts, I'm trying to move this along.
I think that's a good idea, if that's a motion, I'll second it.
Okay.
Mikey?
Yes, I can't, why can't I see you, I can't see you, yes, go ahead.
So I agree with what you just said, I was gonna make a comment about that as well. I also would like to request that we move 4E up before 4D, because I think 4D is gonna end tonight.
I'd like to second that, Mikey.
You know what, I think that's, okay, yeah, that's great, I'll accept that too. So we have a motion involving 2B and 2C to the end, we have as well 4E in front of 4D, and we adjourn in the memory of Mike Trainan and the four, as I understand, homeless people killed by cars over the last month in Malibu. Can we have roll call on that, please?
And Councilmember Fair is the second, or do you also accept that amendment?
Yes, thank you.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Uring?
Yes.
Mayor Pratim Gristanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Can I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on April 1st, 2020, with the amended agenda posted on April 8th, 2020.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we go to 1A, and we're going to show the City of Malibu's 30th Anniversary Commemorative Video. We, obviously during COVID, we were unable to do any sort of event, which was too bad, but just reality, and the staff, I think, put together a great video which shows a lot about the history of the city of Malibu. Thank you very much to the team that put that together. A couple of very notable themes, beauty mixed with periodic disaster seems to be the history of Malibu, and there appears to have been a time when we all used to get together in person, and I look forward to seeing that actually return here at some point, so thank you very much, that was, that was powerful. Next, we're gonna go to 1B, update on school district separation. As you know, we are right in the heart of some very important stuff related to school district separation. Starting with this Wednesday night at 6 o'clock, we are having a community awareness night, and the purpose is to provide the community general information to prepare for our meeting on the 17th, Saturday the 17th, with, I lack, I don't even know what this stands for, LA County of Education? Close?
Laco.
Laco. And it's a preliminary public hearing, very important to get this far. So at the community awareness night, we're gonna get information on where we're at, there's been a lot going on in a lot of different ways. Besides getting the information from our amazing team, we're gonna have some breakout sessions where people will get to learn more about the student experience, academics, school facilities, campus health, campus health and safety, financial analysis of what separation looks like, and there'll be a Spanish language community breakout session as well. And with that, Karen, and so please, please, Wednesday the 14th at 6:00 PM, the Zoom meeting ID is on the city's website, I think we're gonna have it shown here by the team in just a second, right? And with that, I'll hand it over to Karen.
Okay, thank you, Mikey. Yes, so as Mikey just said, Wednesday night at 6 o'clock, we have got the community awareness meeting, I encourage everyone to attend, and then what we are doing is updating the community and getting prepared for our Laco preliminary hearing, which is on Saturday, this Saturday, April 17th, it starts at 9:30 AM. I don't know if we have login information for the public yet.
Can we advance this presentation about three slides? On two more. There you go, Councilmember Fair.
Okay, thank you. All right, if anybody wants to, you might want to get out your phone right now and take a picture of this slide, so that you will have that login information handy. And we encourage all members of the public to listen in on this hearing and to voice your opinion. We have been given, we've been told, speaker time is one minute per person. So anything you'd like to say regarding Malibu's desire and need for school district separation, please practice saying it in 60 seconds or less, so that your comments are not cut off. We've worked a long time to get to this point, we weren't even sure we would get this hearing. It's a preliminary hearing, this is not going to be a decision, up or down, but it's a step that we've got to get through. Anyone who hasn't yet, I highly encourage you to look on the city website, malibu city.org/musd, which stands for Malibu Unified School District, malibu city.org/musd, and you will find a plethora of information on school district separation. So I would really, really encourage everybody, so many of us have worked on this for so long, if anybody's watching who's not aware of it, all the more reason to join us on Wednesday night and figure out why this is important to Malibu. Anybody who knows me knows that I could talk for the rest of the night about this subject, I will not do that, and I'm going to turn it over to Christine Wood, she's our deputy city attorney representing us on school district separation. Christine? I'm not sure if she can hear us.
There she is.
Thank you, Councilmember Fair and Mayor Pearson, if we can go to the next slide. So I just wanted, in the last few days, the last business day on Friday, the city received a counter offer from the district in response to the best and final offer that the city had issued in early March. Their response to our best and final was pretty delayed, and so it didn't really allow us an opportunity to present, present it to the council for direct action, but we did want to just provide the council with an update that the district did send the counter offer, and it's been provided. Unfortunately, the counter offer was basically the same fiscal offer that had been provided during the three-year negotiations, it was unacceptable, again, it represented a permanent redistribution of Malibu's property taxes. Again, it represented a permanent redistribution of Malibu's property taxes in perpetuity. And, you know, so it was something that we had already pretty much, we knew that the fiscal aspect of the counter offer was a non-starter. But there were a couple of exciting things that came out of the counter offer, one of which is the fact that the district now has officially gone on record, along with the city, in fact, saying that they agree to school separation, that they fundamentally agree to the idea of school separation. The real question is just how to separate in a way that's fair and equitable. And, you know, that's a really kind of loaded disagreement, right? That's where all of the disagreement has happened. And so, one of the things that they did offer in the counter offer that we will be responding to is this idea of allowing Laco not to just be a stand and judge of the petition, but to also ask Laco to be an assistant in determining what's fair and equitable. In some ways, we could even ask Laco to provide us a recommendation of what's fair and equitable and agreeing to that recommendation, that that be a binding agreement, which is something we're going to offer back to the district. And if they, if they agree to that term, then we'll bring it back to the council for your consideration and action. But preliminarily, we'd like them to agree that if Laco decides what's fair and equitable, it's something they would agree to. Or I think it's fair to say that ad hoc committee and the school finance consultants are a little leery of that because, you know, we've had a lot of experience where the district, you know, whether it was Monk or, you know, other negotiations where they thought they were agreeing or we all thought we were in agreement about how we were moving forward. And then they somewhat reneged on those agreements. So, there's not real hope, but there is a promise, right? I think I'm even more excited after watching that 30-year video of the city of Malibu. It really speaks to the idea that we could be watching a three-year video about the independent Malibu Unified School District at some point in the future. So, we're going to put that forth, also in accordance with the council's action on October 12th, that we continue with the Laco process, which is what we're doing. We're just looking for ways to work within that process to realize the new school district. The other thing I just wanted to point out, on Friday, the district also released, in addition to their counter offer, which is available on the website, if anyone is listening, I would like to see it. The district also released a communication by the superintendent that made several claims that were really just unfortunate and untrue. And so, the district, there's just several things that they continue to say that are untrue. The idea that the city walked away from previous negotiations is untrue, is patently untrue. The city sent several communications over the course of the last year to the district that went unanswered. So, we, when the council acted in October to pursue the Laco process, it was because there had not been any communication from the district for some time. The idea that Santa Monica cannot prepare for the hearing, that's this Saturday because it was focused on reopening, is also untrue. We've known since December that we were having a hearing and there was no reason the district couldn't prepare. It's not as if they just found out within the last few weeks. We've been really clear and we, if you come to the community meeting on Wednesday, you could hear a full financial presentation. But the city's petition will not result in a loss of per student dollars for the district or a loss of programs. The city has specifically offered a proposal that does not allow for a loss of per student dollars for at least 10 years. And so, the, and so the last one is this idea that an independent Malibu Unified School District will damage diversity and equity in the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District. And that's one of the things that we really have to address because staying together creates a lot of inequity for the Malibu students. And so, this idea that diversity and equity are somehow put at risk by an independent Malibu Unified School District is also patently untrue. Each of the schools will continue to have the same campus level of diversity that existed prior to separation. And so, we will be able to address a lot of these in detail at the community awareness night. So, I would just encourage anyone who's interested in knowing more about each of these topics to join us at the community awareness night, but also be sure to join us on Saturday at the preliminary hearing and be sure to let Laco know that the community as a whole is very much interested in an independent school district. I'll take any questions if there are any.
Christine, I just wanted to go back to the point about the financial negotiations. Laco has offered to work with an independent third party to work out a binding deal, basically binding arbitration. And that's something that we are interested in. And I understand Santa Monica is as well. We want to make sure that we're all on the same page with that.
I might frame that just a little differently. Laco has hired a consultant to look at both of our proposals to make sure they are legal and allow for feasible school districts after separation. We are hoping that third-party consultant will also help us find what's fair and equitable. So, we're also hoping for that, which also Member Fair was referring to. I'm not sure if that's part of their scope just yet, but that is what we're hoping for. They're a very reputable consultant and one that we believe will, would be able to provide us a fair and equitable way to separate.
Yeah, thank you. I think as long as we're assured there's not interference, we feel confidence in that procedure. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Councillors, any questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, really appreciate it. Okay, now we're going to go on to 2A. And I believe I-
Mayor Pearson?
Yeah, did I forget something?
To see the proclamation declaring-
Oh, yeah, right in front of me too. Thank you so much, I appreciate the help. Okay, we're on to 1C. Proclamation declaring April 2021 as DMV Donate Life California Month in Malibu. Whereas, and the proclamation reads, whereas organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and bone donation are life-saving acts, life-giving acts, recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion for those in need. And whereas more than 108,000 individuals nationwide and more than 21,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. And on average, 17 people die each day while waiting. And whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities. And whereas the sing, a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. And whereas donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others and deceased organ donors saved more than 33,000 lives last year, the most ever. And whereas any person can register to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor regardless of age or medical conditions, and over 17 million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California Donor Registry to ensure their wishes to be organ, eye, and tissue donors are honored. And whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Donor Registry when applying for or renewing their driver's licenses or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Malibu declares April 2021 as DMV Donate Life California Month. And in doing so, encourage all Californians to check yes when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card or by signing up at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org I believe we have, do we have Rita Jackson here to make a few comments? The legacy ambassador?
We're working on getting her in needed.
Okay, thank you so much.
Hello, yes, I'm here.
Hi Rita, thank you for being here.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Pearson and council members. I truly appreciate this opportunity to speak with you. It's unfortunate we can't be there in person to accept this proclamation, but we truly appreciate it. With the city of Malibu acknowledging and proclaiming April Donate Life Month, you are, as it stated, helping several people to recognize and acknowledge that there's such an importance for registering to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor. I'm actually speaking to you because I'm a donor mom. My daughter Jasmine chose to be a donor. She registered when she got her driver's license on her 17th birthday. And when she came home that day, she was actually more excited to tell me that she was now registered as a donor than she was about getting her driver's license. Fortunately, you know, as a mom, I really didn't want to think about that. I just simply was proud of her and I told her I was proud that she made that decision, but I was in no way wanting to consider what that meant at the time. Sadly, it was only three years later, just before her 21st birthday, that Jasmine actually passed away suddenly from a pulmonary embolism. Jasmine was a very helpful, supportive, just kind person. She wanted to help everyone. She always tried to think of ways of helping everyone. She volunteered her time in the community and in the city of Corona constantly. And she was continuing to do that. She was going on to school to be a therapist, to help children who are autistic. She really wanted to do a lot to help others. So, the fact that she would want to register did not surprise me. It has helped me as a parent who's lost a child to know that Jasmine's legacy has continued. Since she passed in April of 2013, which I consider this Jasmine's month, by the way, her angelversary, she has actually helped over 30 people with her tissue donation. Because of her passing suddenly, she could not donate organs. But one of the things that a tissue donor can donate is heart valves. And Jasmine saved the life of a person with her heart valves. So Jasmine's legacy has continued. And that's something that I just want your community to realize that if everybody was to register, if something was to happen, you'd actually be able to consider that your loved one's legacy is continuing and they are helping others. And there's other families that are going to be so appreciative of that gift. So, once again, I thank you, Mayor Pearson and council members of Malibu for acknowledging this month as Donate Life Month. And please feel free to go to donatelifecalifornia.org and you can look up stories like Jasmine's so that you can see how many people have been saved and how many people have done, made that compassionate decision. Thank you once again.
Thank you Rita, thank you for sharing that very powerful story and your message. Wow, that's a lot and makes me realize how happy I am that I've been signed up for many years without even considering how powerful your story is. So, thank you very much, really appreciate it. Okay, now we're at 2A and public speakers. And if we could start with Jim Braden, as he wishes to give us a report, Lieutenant Braden?
Yes, Mayor Pearson, you have seven speakers for this item, including James Braden. And then I also wanted to check with you, Brian Merrick had signed up to give a commission update on 2B. Would you want to hear his comment now or wait until we get to 2B at the end of the agenda?
I did not see that anyone was going to sign up. I, we kind of already moved that to the back. Shoot. I don't know, can I get a nod of city council, whether we should have Brian? Okay, I got an, okay, yeah, we'll have Brian's. Okay, okay, let's have Jim and then we'll get Brian at the end after the public speaker.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Jim.
Okay. Well, first, I want to start off with, I appreciate all the gratitude and sentiment and everything else that you guys have expressed toward Mike Trynance's passing. It's been hard on all of us. Mike was such an asset to the community and he had such a beautiful way of being strong, but being very compassionate in the way he did his job. And I, I know, I don't think, I know he touched so many people in Malibu. And so, it takes time to deal with that. I wanted to give you guys an idea on, I mean, we had four fatals in the last several weeks, which is a very rare thing to have. I'll kind of go through them so you can understand the different situations. The first one several weeks ago was at Porco Canyon in PCH. It was a car traveling eastbound. It was approximately in the early morning hours around 2:00. And an individual was struck on the roadway. The, during, in the investigation portion of the traffic investigation, the, we obtained video, surveillance video from a house just east of Corral Canyon Beach. And basically, it just showed the individual stepped out into the roadway. There was a person that was experiencing homelessness. So, that's what I can say about that one. We, last, the Sunday before last, we had a fatal, which was two people. It was at Bush Drive and PCH. On that one, three individuals experiencing homelessness were crossing the roadway. It's dark in that area. Their clothing didn't help them, they had dark clothing on. And basically, an individual that was traveling westbound on PCH struck an individual. That individual was dead at the scene. The, in the minutes after that individual was struck, one of the other people that was crossing the road with them ran to the west side of PCH and was picking up items off the roadway. Tow truck happened to be heading eastbound on PCH. And in the investigation portion, we recovered video, which is like a dash cam that was on this tow truck that shows, the camera points forward. But basically, it showed the individual was bent down in the roadway on the west side, in the westbound lanes, and that the truck came upon him. And he wasn't really paying attention to, you know, that there could be traffic coming. And he stood up and was struck and was killed at the scene. And then, we had another one, which was on a Saturday night. That was at Corral Canyon. An individual was headed eastbound on PCH in the number one lane. The individual, they weren't traveling overly fast. The, in the investigation, it shows from the black box of the vehicle, they're going approximately 51 miles an hour. They went into a full skid. The driver saw a individual on a bicycle, no lighting on it or anything else. And the individual was traveling in the number one lane eastbound on PCH. This individual was struck. He flew across the roadway into the westbound lanes, was possibly struck by another vehicle in the westbound lanes. That vehicle, we believe, didn't, wasn't aware that they struck someone. In each of these situations, the, can I put it? That there wasn't really factors from the drivers of the vehicle. The, none of the vehicles were traveling in X- The uh, none of the vehicles were traveling in excess speed on the roadway. Um, all the fatalities in the pre-portion before the crash, the individuals, the pedestrians, had, had done something that was in, in a dangerous manner, either running across a dark roadway, uh, being in the roadway or driving on a bicycle in the roadway. All of them are unfortunate. The uh deputies have been out um, talking to homeless people around Malibu about the safety of, of not being on the dark roadway. The uh, they'll continue to do that and they'll get with other agencies to talk with the homeless people and tell them the dangers. I can't really, I don't really have suggestions as far as, you know, oh, if we had lighting here or if we had this or that, that this one occurred. It, they were all in relation to an act of an individual. The uh, um, everybody, if, if you're crossing the roadway or anything else, the one at Bush Drive, there's a light there uh, where they controlled the intersection and a, a crosswalk um, that should have been used. The individual up by Porco Canyon, it almost seemed like he stepped out in the roadway on purpose. Uh, the bicyclist, that's still being investigated. And so I, I don't have a reason or where he was going, or if he's just happened to be traveling, you know, had come from the south side going to north side. Um, I'm not quite sure on that. They're still investigating. So um with that, um, one other thing I want to say is that um, if residents can continue, when they see something uh either suspicious related to crime or if they see an individual walking along the roadway with, that they think it, it potentially they could be hit or something, which we get these calls, um, make those calls to us. They're very important. Um, it can save someone's life. The uh, sometimes it's related to intoxication. All those crashes, none of the drivers of the vehicles were, were, they all submitted to testing. We always do that when, when it's related to a fatality. It basically could disprove that you have any intoxication. None, none of those that, uh, the last one's still being investigated, but the other ones, there was no indication of any intoxication in the drivers. Sometimes in the evidence portion or the aftermath, um, we don't have an ability to deter, to determine if the uh pedestrian was under the influence. So it lea, it leaves us with uh, not knowing that sometimes. So with that, I'm open for any questions anybody has.
Uh, councillors, do you have any questions of Lieutenant Braden? I think that's a pretty sobering story you've told and um, I really appreciate you taking.
It is. And, and uh, that's what I would say. If you see individuals walking along the roadway or if you see anybody along Malibu that you believe is intoxicated or anything, give us a call because we're specialists in that and we, we do get these calls all the time, but it's very important that the call is made um, so that the situation um doesn't end in a tragedy.
Thank you, Lieutenant. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, can we have um the other public speakers, please?
Yes, we'll have seven more speakers. They're Mark Graham, Craig Hill, Norman Haney, Mark Bowdy, Craig Foster, Lynn Norton, and then Brian Merrick. Our next speaker will be Mark Graham.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor Pearson, council members and staff. My name is Mark Graham and I live in Elk Grove. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. There are a couple of bills currently in the legislature in Sacramento that would be very bad for local zoning authority. And I think that the city of Malibu and every city should oppose them. These are, in particular, SB five-five-six and S and AB five-thirty-seven. Now, I want to give you a brief rundown. The League of California Cities actually opposes SB five-fifty-six. It's sponsored by Senator Dodd and they, you may have already received the, the email from the league on that, which is dated March thirtieth. But the long story short is, I'm quoting from the league's letter. Well, it conflicts with federal law and conflicts with the Federal Communication Commission's regulations that acknowledge certain uh municipal zoning authority over cell antennas. We've, we've been through this before. And you may remember in two thousand seventeen, there was a bill called S six forty-nine, sponsored by Senator Ben Hueso. And it was a complete gift. It was written by and for the telecommunications companies. Hueso might as well, you know, be working for them. I mean, he was. And that would have really all but eliminated local zoning authority over cell antennas. What happened at the time was not only there was opposition from environmental groups and some health groups and organizations and many individuals, but three hundred and twenty-five cities and forty-seven out of the fifty-eight counties opposed this bill. And their main reason was that they wanted to retain the, the power that they've always had to control what happens in the public right of way. And that should not be turned over to Sacramento or basically turned over to AT&T and Verizon. Well, the legislators were, I don't know, they were indifferent to that argument, most of them. And it sailed through every committee in the Senate and the Assembly side and was passed, although the final vote, especially in the uh, in both houses, but especially in the Senate, were a lot closer. And finally, it was vetoed by Governor Brown. So uh, the best thing would be for every city and county to oppose these two bills, SB five-five-six and AB five-thirty-seven, and defeat them while they're in the legislature as a last resort, try to get Governor Newsom to oppose these bills. Now, AB um, five-thirty-seven would basically declare that the whole issue of permitting of cell antennas is a, a matter of statewide concern and it's not a municipal affair as defined in Article Five of the California Constitution. That is the, the state's way of saying, it's not up to you anymore, cities and counties. You don't, you don't have any more control over this and we're taking over. So that would be a bad thing for the city and for all your residents. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Our next speaker is Craig Hill.
Good evening, everybody. Um, first, I'd like to publicly thank council for keeping to your convictions in denying the beachlands dangerous diagonal valley maneuver across PCH. I think we all just saved some lives at that spot in the future. Second, chatting with Deputy Mike was something I looked forward to at city meetings. I hope that something will be learned from this tragedy. Now, about the city hall debacle, I'm sure there's blame to go all around, but I've kept my mind open and my mouth shut until now. It's been a long time that this hasn't been resolved and the delay is metastasizing in the body politic. Assuming the delay means that there's still some negotiating, maybe it's time for each of you to adjust your expectations. For example, Riva, it's been three months since you announced your intent to depart. In retrospect, your letter elevated an indefinite antagonism into a formal dispute. Whereas if you had stayed the course, maybe by now everyone would have sorted out some differences. Now you risk looking like the proverbial dog in the manger, evidently inhibiting the council from hiring someone else and perpetuating the discord in the community. Is it that you're still not happy with the color of your parachute? I think that if you truly cared about Malibu, you'd settle for silver and we could all move on. Now, council, for your part, hold Riva to her word, but make the concessions necessary to make it work for her. And where's your short list of replacements? I haven't heard about that. It's been three months. By now you should have identified several good candidates ready to step in. Meanwhile, a staff reset could also help with the problem that sometimes you, council, abrogate your authority to them. Here are three recent examples. Uh, you allowed Rob Duboe to shill for the Malibu Beach Inn. Now, he's a nice guy, but he had no business trying to refute off the cuff citations to vehicle code and statutory standards for turning radius and vehicle stopping distances. Whereas my law background qualifies me to read code and even the applicant's attorney didn't refute my observations. Yet you had Rob in there batting for the team that was against safety. Who put him up to that? Second, on tonight's wireless telecom item, staff proposes to override parts of the planning commission resolution. Sure, staff can flesh in some details, but it's not within their authority to say, thanks, but we're going in a different direction. Who authorized that? Third, Riva will often say, if I could just jump in here, then interrupt without permission. Okay, but when a council member interrupts another, Mayor Mikey will rightfully insist they wait their turn. And that sounds probably trivial, but it speaks about the power dynamic. Often, Riva has something helpful to add, but sometimes she breaks your flow of thought, which, I don't know, that could be her intent. I don't know. So to each of you, it's time to cut your losses. Let's reset and ring in a new chapter of governance with some more collaborative personal chemistry. I don't know what your next move would be, but I think each of you probably does have some idea. Please put the public good ahead of your personal desires, take some decisive action, and let's move forward. Thanks.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Norman Haney.
Good evening, uh, city council members. Uh, this is Norm Haney. Uh, I assume you can hear me. I can hear you. Okay. Uh, I too uh, am very saddened to hear that Mike Trynance is no longer with us. He was a great human being. He was compassionate, empathetic, and still able to get the job done. I learned a lot from talking and, and being around Mike. Uh, he will be sorely missed. The conversation I wanted to have with the city council tonight has to do with the fact that there seems to be some confusion with regard to whether or not the initial study on the Seaview Hotel project uh, that was required by SEQA, according to staff, did not include the repair and maintenance of the check valve in Topanga. And uh, District Twenty-Nine has raised that question as to whether it should be included in the review. The fact is, it was not included because the law is very clear. SEQA exempts repair and maintenance of utilities. Uh, section one-five-three-oh-one talks about existing facilities and this is in SEQA. It's Class One. It says that repairs of utilities are basically exempt. Uh, there's another section, one-five-three-oh-two, that says the replacement or reconstruction, which is a Class Two, is also exempt. Public works projects are exempt from SEQA. So it would be inappropriate to include a review in the initial study, which is part of SEQA, in the analysis. There is some confusion on the part of the staff. I would really like the city council to direct staff to move forward with the project. Um, the fact that I am required to pay for District Twenty-Nine's check valve, I'm not doing it. I'm paying for it. I'm not doing the repair. They're doing the repair and the repair is exempt. It's an existing utility. It's being repaired. So that's my request, that you direct staff to move forward. It's taken me four and a half years to get to the brink of a city planning commission hearing. Please help me move this project forward. Thank you for your listening.
Thank you, Norm.
Our next speaker is Mark Bowdy.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mark.
Right, so I wanted to uh, let everybody know that we decided to form a Malibu Awareness Committee. It's an exempt from the Brown Act standing citizens committee, which will advertise publicly. We're gonna try to focus on just purely factual information with an eye on getting some of the low information voters to be a little more informed about what's going on. Uh, two, I think it would be better if we could get appointed planning commissioners to try to not make comments on closed session negotiations that are going on with the city manager. Uh, I'm not gonna go beyond that other than to say every time I've seen Riva make a comment, it's designed to move a meeting along or help. I haven't seen any effort on the part of our city manager to delay or disrupt any meeting. Third, I will tell you that because of the combination of Woolsey and COVID, I don't think, you know, Karen and Mikey are gonna be held accountable for not much, you know, happening in the first two years where the city's recovering from trauma, but there is a concern now that it's April, that this sort of strange group of two guys that live on the same street above Civic Center and then the other three folks is having a lot of trouble getting to the work plan. Um, it, it has become a recurring topic of conversation in Malibu at the places that are sort of open for business where people are dining again. I, I don't know what to say to get the five of you to start running the city together, but maybe if you could sort of conceal the politics for maybe sixty days and just focus on getting the items that are on the work plan done, I think everyone would appreciate it. Um, I'll have some brief comments on six A and seven D if we make it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Our next speaker is Craig Foster.
Hi, I no longer need to speak. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Craig.
Our next speaker is Lynn Norton.
I can hear you, Lynn.
Okay, thanks. Uh, this is just a small point that I wanted to make about our process and I think it was maybe similar to one of the points that Craig made, which is that, in my opinion, uh, our planning, the planning department recommendations have sometimes gotten off course. And I have a lot of confidence in Richard and I'm hoping that Richard can, you know, bring it back on course. And um, or you can tell me if you don't think that I'm seeing this right. But the way that I see it is that the planning department is not a decision-making body. And the planning commission is a decision-making body. And obviously, you know, their decision can be appealed to the, to the city council, but they take public input and they make decisions. And so it really feels weird to me whenever the planning department in the past has come back and suggested something different than what the planning commission actually recommended. As if the planning department themselves saw themselves as a decision-making body. So just to make an analogy, it's like Bruce and Karen just had an ad hoc, were part of an ad hoc committee and they came back and they made her, and they came back and decided what they were gonna recommend to the city council. And wouldn't it be weird if somebody who wrote the staff report recommended doing something different than what they recommended? You know what I mean? Like, they went, they had their thing, they have a recommendation and then somebody writes up the report and they actually recommend ignoring their recommendation. So anyway, that's just my point, which is that the, that I think that the planning department, you know, they may say technically here are the points that are challenging with the way, you know, like what the planning commission is suggesting has these certain technical challenges to it and because of their expertise, you know, they can provide light on that, but I think that the planning department shouldn't be acting as a decision-making body. Anyway, that's just, I think that would be an improvement if we could get that back on course. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Our final speaker is Brian Merrick.
Okay.
Hi there. Mayor Pearson and City Council, uh, I was asked by the Public Works Commission and commissioners to give you an update and speak precisely because uh, you um, don't ever have anybody do this. You didn't even know I was gonna do it. So anyhow, um, they did ask, it was unanimous, and so I'm just gonna give you a quick back, a quick little recap. Uh, we had a public works meeting that was a joint meeting with the um, public safety and uh, we covered a few items. There were citizens from um, the canyon area. citizens from the canyon areas that had asked regarding some sort of warning sign or something to that nature of when a fire was down canyon of them rather than up canyon. And so we kind of went through all the different scenarios and determined that, you know, a sign or something like that that was controlled by the city really wouldn't work, but one of the things that came up was a corral canyon, specifically when you take that big hairpin and start coming down. Once you start going down, there's no way to turn around. So we're going to be looking into a turnaround for those people up there so that they don't, they're not, there's, they'll have ability in case fires coming upwind. We covered the Point Dune speed humps, which have been very effective on Point Dune. We went from on a Friday prior to the humps of having 431 violations of speed down to only 50 now post, and that's with about the same number of cars. So the humps are very effective in slowing people down. Also, so going forward, we're just going to be, work, Public Works itself is going to be working on Phase 2 of the wastewater, a right turn lane at Tranqus, PCH warning signs, and probably for most of the youth here would appreciate it, the permanent skate park is scheduled for 2021. So those are all in our work plan and moving forward along with the usual drain repairs and other things. Finally, one, one thing that was brought up by some of the community, we had, we tried to have it on one of our agendas, which was related to parking, but it was told that it was the Public Safety's domain. Public Safety said it wasn't their domain, so I think that parking probably is both of those commissions' domain. But in, in response to why that was brought up, it's got to do with the farmer's market, which is sort of Malibu's only real weekly community event that services the people in our community. And again, you know, because of San Monica College construction, there's just no parking for the community there. So we would ask that you, you know, it's temporary, that, but that we somehow expedite the process to get the little chili cook-off area there open for the residents to park. I know that there's some sort of permitting going through the process there, but it's, it should be sped up just because of the fact that it is our only community event. And I just want to say that the Public Works staff, Rob and Travis and all the actual guys that work out there on the street, they do a great job, and we encourage the public to contact us. Thank you.
Brian, thank you for that excellent report. We do appreciate it. Okay, we are now at the consent calendar. Do the members of the public wish to pull anything?
Nothing's been pulled by the public.
Okay, do city councillors wish to pull anything? Bruce?
Just one item, 3B6.
Did you say 3B6?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, can we have a motion on the rest of the consent calendar, Steve?
I'll make a motion to move the consent calendar with the exception of item 3B6.
Okay, and Paul, are you seconding that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gresanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now that we're at 3B6, do you want a report, Bruce, or do you have a comment?
I just have some questions.
Okay.
So I don't make a report. This is, as I understand, that this is a $3.345 million low-bid contract, which is being increased both discretionarily by the city and then with the consent of the City Council by additional $1.086 million, which is a 32% increase. My first question is, is this paid exclusively with Measure R funds, or is the city paying for it?
It's, this is 100% Measure R funds.
Okay.
And on top of that, even with adding this additional funds, that we'll still have about $100,000 left over with the project with these change orders, so.
That was my next question. Do we, if, if we don't spend money on this project, do we have it for other projects, or do we just have a budget for this project, full stop?
So after the completion of this project, there's a process on how we can transfer the remaining balance to either PCH Median or PCH Signal Sync, and so that's, that's the plan. So once we get done, I'll make all those recommendations and changes to get that over, switched over to there, so those projects can be fully funded and, you know, get the additional funding.
Okay. Um, okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
Sure.
Sorry, Steve has a question.
One, one quick question. You know, the, the the, the discussion here, it says, you know, we, we have to pay additional money to change the signals on the corner of Webb Way and Pujamadig. I mean, how was that not included in the original estimate the firm gave us? I mean, it seems to me that that should be a fairly obvious thing, no?
Yes. It, it was one of those things. It was some additional pedestrian push buttons that after we went out there and looked at the improvements and what had to be done and looking at the ADA, kind of really the configuration of where the ramps are and where the signal poles are, required additional pedestrian push buttons to, so when someone goes through those intersections to that cross, to those access ramps, there's certain requirements and distances where they have to be, push those push buttons, and so that's, that was missed by the designers, and we had to accommodate that and fix that with this.
Okay, one last question. You know this GMZ firm that is basically resulting in all these increases? Have we used them in the past?
Yes, we have.
And is this consistent with the way we typically have to deal with them, or is this?
No, no, it's, and actually, they're, they've been very, very fair. We worked on several projects with them and, and it's.
You don't, you don't consider this to be a problem?
Oh, no, no, no. They're, they're actually one of my better contractors that I work with and very fair in kind of dealing with everything on here, so, yeah.
I'll make a motion to move this, Mikey.
Okay, do we have a second? Oh, wait, so I'm sorry, Paul has his hand up. I didn't see that. Sorry.
I just wanted to, I'm sorry. I just wanted to point out that according to the Pink Page, when this was originally awarded in 2019, we, they set aside a reserve of 25% of the agreement account for possible change orders. And so instead of being 30% over, we're 5% over what we were originally set aside.
That's. Is that? It's a different way, that's a different way to look at it, but okay.
Not technically accurate.
Technically accurate. Okay.
Not accurate.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's an interesting approach. But I'll still move it, Mikey.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have roll call?
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gresanti?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Just want to say, I forgot that I've had a couple of residents of that area get ahold of me and say how really pleased they are with it, even though it's not quite all the way done, so. And I did meet the general manager of the project the other day by chance, and I don't know, very, very good communicator, I will say, though maybe they missed that. I don't think it probably wasn't his job on that to notice that, but a very conscientious guy, so yes, is my vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So we are now moving on to Item 4A, Cultural Arts Commission Name Change. Very exciting.
Yes, we like to bring the most exciting items to you on the busy night, so. Good evening, Mayor Pearson, members of City Council. Our Community Services Deputy Director, Krista Mariesgo, plays a large role with our department in working with the Cultural Arts Commission, so she'll actually be presenting the item tonight. And we'll both be available with any, available to answer any questions you have at the completion of that.
All right. Thank you, Jesse. So the item before you tonight is the name change for the Cultural Arts Commission. There, they were established in 2012 and under the name Cultural Arts Commission. And this year in February, we took an item to the commission at their request to change it to Arts Commission, and so the ordinance number 482 refers to that. And I believe Chair Lottie Sharon is also available if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public speakers on this item?
We do have two speakers signed up. We have Lottie Sharon and Graham Clifford.
Great, let's hear from them.
Okay, am I on?
You are, Lottie.
Okay, yeah, I really just wanted to be available for any questions you have. I think the past two commissions have wanted to change the name, and the majority on this one also wants to change the name. It just seems it's easier, it's more marketable, it's just seems to be a better choice. So if you guys have any questions, just tell her, I'm here.
Okay, thank you, Lottie.
Yeah.
So I don't see Graham Clifford in the meeting. I did notice Craig Hill raised his hand. Mayor Pearson, if you wanted to hear from him.
Okay, a quick comment would be appreciated, so we can keep on this fast track. Go ahead, Craig.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I think that's a great choice, but I really raised my hand because are we not having council member comments and Riva comments and such?
No, we changed the order to try and get to the huge agenda and put that at the end.
I'm sorry, I missed that moment. My bad. Thank you.
All right. Did Graham show up in the last 12 seconds?
He did not, so that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, so we're back here for comments and/or a motion. I see Bruce.
I move that we approve this.
I'll second.
And Mayor Pearson, if I could read the title of the ordinance?
You may indeed, Mr. Cotty.
Ordinance Number 42 is an ordinance to the City of Malibu amending Title II Administration of Personnel of the Malibu Municipal Code, Chapter 2.26 Cultural Arts Commission, to change the name of the Cultural Arts Commission, the Malibu Arts Commission, and finding the same exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, thank you for reading that. We have a motion and a second. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gresanti?
I'm ashamed to admit, I always thought that was the name, yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And thank you to our Malibu Arts Commission for everything they do, and look forward to events in person sometime in the near future. We're on to 4B, Vehicle Impound Fees. We have a report, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. So in 1992, the City Council adopted Resolution 92-125, which established a $30 fee for the release of impounded vehicles. This amount was based on the cost, the current cost back then to impound a vehicle, which included $25 for a parking control officer and the city's overhead rate of 15%. Well, since 1992, both the process for impounding a vehicle and the cost has changed. Firstly, we don't have parking control officers anymore. In most cases, our volunteers on patrol identify cars that need to be impounded, and because they don't have a legal authority to impound a vehicle, they need to call a sheriff's deputy to start that process. And according to the Sheriff's Department, the cost for a deputy to come out and do this is approximately $95 on average. In addition, the city's overhead rate has increased 40 to 47%, which, based on $95, would amount to about $44.65. So on January 6th, we took this issue to the Public Safety Commission to review the impound fee, and they voted to recommend that the City Council increase our impound fee to $150. So at this point, staff recommends that the City Council rescind the old resolution and adopt a new resolution in order to recover the full cost of impounding a vehicle. And that's my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any public speakers on this item?
You do not.
We do not. Okay, we're back here at the council then for any comments or a motion. I see Paul.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Resolution Number 21-15.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, Bruce seconds it. Any comments? Okay, I think we're all, it's looking good then. I would say, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Gresanti?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson? I'm sorry, Councilmember Silverstein, wrong order.
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
We are, yeah, exactly. Okay, we're moving. This is great. 4C, Amendments to the Malibu Coastal, Malibu Local Coastal Program Sign Regulations. Can we have a report, please?
Hello, and I believe there's a PowerPoint. That should be loading. There we go. Thank you.
There we go.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. The project before you this evening is Local Coastal Program Amendment Number 20-001. On November 9th, 2020, the City Council adopted a resolution to initiate the amendments to the LCP and to consider provisions of the LCP sign regulations in light of the constitutionally protected rights of private property owners recognized in the California Coastal Act. This amendment would affect citywide regulation by changing the Malibu LCP sign regulations, specifically sign sections 3.15.3X and 3.15.4C of the LCP Local Implementation Plan and Sections 2.8 and 2.81 of the LCP Land Use Plan. The city has previously been challenged on these sections as an unconstitutional content-based regulation of speech in violation of the First Amendment. The criteria by which the sign permit applications are reviewed has also been challenged as inherently subjective. Specifically, it was contended that paragraphs of LIP Section 3.15.4C shown here give city officials, quote, "unbridled discretion to deny assigned CBP and thereby result in an unconstitutional prior restraint on speech." Next slide, please. And this is where you can see all the sections I was just describing. Next slide, please. To provide some more context, the three criteria to be removed are just three of 11 criteria. In addition, there are other regulations which any sign is subject to. For example, 3.15.5D says the number of colors, all permanent signs shall contain no more than four different colors for the purposes of this provision. Black and white should be considered different colors, etc. And it is important to remember that these signs would still be to, would still be required to apply for a coastal development permit. If signs are located on the beach itself, findings for Chapter 6, the Scenic Resource Protection Chapter, Chapter 10 Shoreline Development, and Chapter 12 Public Access would likely be required in addition to the standard Chapter 3 zoning findings. Next slide, please. For consistency, staff recommends that the language in Land Use Plan Sections 2.8 and 2.81 be amended in the same manner as LIP Sections mentioned previously. Chapter 2 is the Public Access and Recreation Chapter. These are each policies outlined in that chapter under the Shoreline Access heading. To avoid any implementation that might infringe on residents' constitutional rights, the proposed LCP amendment removes LIP Section 3.15.3X and Paragraphs 3, 5, and 9 of LIP Section 3.15.4C from the Malibu LCP shown on the previous slide, and removes the second sentence in LUP Section 2.80 and the second sentence in LUP Section 2.81 from the text, which is shown here in bold. Next slide, please. Chapter 2 of the LUP incorporates the public access policies set forth in the Coastal Act, including Public Resources Code Section 30210, which reads as follows, as you can see in the slide, with the relevant text italicized. Public Resources Code Section 30001.5C also declares that one goal of the Act is to pursue public access policies consistent with the Coastal Act, and taken together, Section 30210 of the Coastal Act and the other sections mentioned, support the amendments proposed. Next slide, please. The California Coastal Commission did send written correspondence opposing the amendments, stating that the signs, which could be allowed by removing the protective language, could be misleading and intimidate the public from gaining legal could be misleading and intimidate the public from gaining lead goal beach access. And stated previously, we believe that the amendments are consistent with the LCP and with the Coastal Act. Next slide, please. In conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution, or sorry, that the City Council adopt the resolution and approve these amendments. Richard and I and the city attorney are here to answer any questions as needed.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you for your report, Justine. Do we have any public speakers?
You don't have any speakers on this item.
Okay, we're back here at, to the council. Questions, comments, or emotions? Paul?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution twenty-one dash sixteen as recommended.
Okay.
I will second that.
Okay, and Steve has his hand up?
I'm just trying to understand where this is going. The Coastal Commission has to approve this, is that correct?
Yes, they do.
Okay. And the Coastal Commission wrote our LCP? Right?
Yes.
Okay, so why is this guy suing us and not going after the Coastal Commission?
You, you would have to ask him why he chose to do that. It's been brought to his attention, and Coastal Commission has chosen not to intervene in the lawsuit as well. So this will make things very clear, you know, who's responsible for those provisions if they remain in the LCP.
How's it gonna make it clear? It's gonna make it clear that the Coastal Commission, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so when we get to the end of this elephant dance that we're going through, we're gonna be clean, right? I mean, no matter how we, whatever happens, I don't know why this guy's taking us to court, but the bottom line is, we can do whatever we want. It's gotta go to the Coastal Commission. They're the ones that are gonna make the final decision. And if this guy really wants to have something changed, you know, if I were him, I'd be getting the other coastal cities to join him in some lawsuit against the Coastal Commission to try and change this, because coming after us isn't gonna make a bit of difference. Is that a fair summary?
In broad strokes, yes, I, I think, I guess focusing his attention on the Coastal Commission on these issues would be a fruitful endeavor if he's looking to get that changed.
Gotcha, I understand. I'm just, I, you know, I kept reading this thing and couldn't figure out why we're in the middle of this, but that's okay.
We got sued, that's why.
Yeah, I'm just saying, but, you know, right, okay, that's, that's all I got, Mikey.
Okay, thank you. Bruce?
Yeah, in light of the fact this is gonna have to be approved by the Coastal Commission, who sent us an objection. It seems kind of silly to be going through this exercise, but I just want to get clarification. This will not affirmatively authorize anything, right? This is just removing a prohibition. We still have to, when anybody wants a sign, they still have to get a permit. Correct?
Unless it's exempt from the, from the permitting requirements, yes.
Okay, so the particular signs that are the subject of the litigation and which are talked about for the most part in this report, they're still gonna have to get permission, a coastal development permit for those signs. Accurate?
I, I believe he never actually turned in an application, so we'd have to examine it to see if it's exempt or what it is, but yes.
Okay, now, and, and it's doubtful the Coastal Commission's ever gonna approve those permits. If we approve this and we approve a sign, which is pursuant to a CDP, do we have, the city have any potential exposure to a civil penalty from the Coastal Commission? If the Coastal Commission has a problem with the permit?
Well, if, if someone wanted to put a sign on their beach, it would be within the appeal jurisdiction, so they could appeal that decision to themselves and then, you know.
But why would, why would that get appealed? Somebody puts up a sign, no, no resident has a problem with it. The Coastal Commission, I don't think, can appeal the CDP, can it?
Yes, you can.
Yeah, cuz it's on the.
Oh, they can appeal the CDP?
Yep.
Okay, that, that answers that, that's fine. What is the, what's the status of the lawsuit? And will the proposed ordinance in any way give the plaintiff any right to legal fees or any other benefit that would cost us something?
Councilmember Shufan can address that. The, the lawsuit in the trial court, the United States District Court, was dismissed by Honorable Percy Anderson. It has been appealed to the Ninth Circuit. As you know, appeals can take a long time. The appeal is in its infancy. No, we will not have, the LCP will not give them any, any rights to attorney's fees.
Any fees. This would, this would moot the appeal in essence, or we would, we would argue this moots the appeal and it would end the controversy altogether?
Potentially, they have challenged the city's indemnification provision as well. It's likely that that's the provision that they are seeking appellate review of. At this point, we haven't seen a brief, so it's not clear yet where they're going with the appeal.
Okay, one last point, which is, and this is, this is very technical, but ordinance four eighty-three, rather than reorder the remaining subsections, could we change it to just replace the repealed sections with the word repealed? It's gonna be confusing down the line when somebody wants to do something and we've got to refer back to precedent to the extent there is any and change, and figure out what the numbers used to be versus what they are now. I think it makes a lot more sense to just put bracket repealed, close bracket, and move on.
What's the, sorry, can you repeat the change that you're proposing to the ordinance?
There, there's one sentence in it, I don't have it in front of me. It says reorder the, the remaining numbers and letters so that the omitted ones don't cause blanks. And I think it makes more sense to just put bracket repealed, close bracket. That way, you don't have something that's now C that used to be D and something that's now four that used to be five, when you're looking back to see what was done in the past.
I think you're looking at Section two B, it says Paragraphs three, five, and nine of Subsection C, a Section three point one five point four, the LIP are hereby repealed, and the remaining paragraphs are renumbered, renumbered in sequence. Is that the section you're?
Yes, I'm suggesting they not be renumbered, they simply be left alone, and we put repealed for the ones that were deleted.
So you would have a, so our code would forever have a, instead of having them numbered in order, it would just, these three, five, and nine would, it would be one, two, repealed, four repealed instead of five, and then six, eight, and then nine would just say repealed rather than renumber them in order?
Correct, I've seen that in multiple other matters. Sometimes you even have omitted.
Well, that, that's not how we've done things here before, but if that is the pleasure of the, the council, if you wanna make, ask for a friendly amendment to the, the motion, it's, it's up to the council if they want to have the code read that way.
I mean, the end result's gonna be that we're gonna go back to what we currently have, right?
Not necessarily.
You never know what the Commission's gonna do, so.
Oh, yeah, I got a pretty good idea what the Commission's gonna do. They're gonna ignore this. I'm just, I'm, I, and I'm just saying, Bruce's makes this easier moving down the line, so we don't have to keep changing. We oughta just think about that.
If the, if the Commission, I mean, if the Commission doesn't approve it, then, you know, this doesn't go into effect until they, you know.
Okay, so everything's.
Application of it.
Yeah, you've been, you lawyers gotta figure that one out. I'm, I'm out of that team.
Well, I don't feel strongly about it, but I, I would request a friendly amendment, but, cuz I think it makes it more easy and sensible to, to approach, but if, if no one wants to do that, that would be fine too.
I like the amendment.
What's that? Is he seconding his amendment?
No, I like the amendment. I'll second it. I'll do whatever I have to do.
Who had the motion, who had the second?
It was a motion.
Paul had the motion.
I'll do both.
Okay, so you're accepting, who, who is the second?
I seconded. I did.
You accept the friendly amendment?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any more comments? Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Oh, can I read the?
Oh, yes, yes, of course.
So this would be the, included the adoption, the introduction of ordinance number four eighty-three, an ordinance of the city of Malibu amending the local coastal program, local implementation plan, sign regulations as part of Local Coastal Program Amendment Number twenty-one dash zero zero one and finding the action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. In addition, you are also adopting Resolution twenty-one dash sixteen.
Okay. Thank you, Trevor. Can we have roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yeah, I'll give you a yes with an understanding, this isn't going anyplace, but yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We're now gonna head over to four E, ordinance establishing hero pay for grocery retail and drug retail workers during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Can we have a report, please?
Yes, Mayor Pearson, members of the council, good evening. I saw Councilmember Euring raise his hand. Was there?
No, no, that, you go, I was gonna, I thought somebody was gonna sponsor this. Nobody wants to sponsor that. I like to be an after-the-fact sponsor because I want the people in the Ralphs to like me when I go shopping there tomorrow.
Councilmember Silverstein and Mayor Pearson did approach me and asked me to prepare the hero pay ordinance.
Okay, I, I thought somebody else had done it, but I figured it was.
With their consensus, I'm sure they let you join in their.
I, I think everyone's vote will speak for how we feel on this one.
Cool, go ahead.
Again, good evening. Item forty, request your consideration of an urgency ordinance requiring the payment of hazard pay for frontline positions in certain grocery and drugstores. The urgency ordinance is designed to address the urgent nature of the health pandemic and need to provide immediate assistance for those at higher risk of infection, including our groceries and drugstore workers. If adopted by a four-fifths vote of the City Council, the urgency ordinance would go into effect immediately. The proposed ordinance, which mirrors the ordinance in effect in unincorporated Los Angeles County, would require grocery and drug retail stores of a specified size within the city to provide premium pay of an additional five dollars per hour to their workers for as long as the Los Angeles County hero pay ordinance remains in effect. That ordinance is currently set to expire on June twenty-sixth, unless extended by Los Angeles County. Of course, the council is free to extend their ordinance as well. The ordinance applies to all retail grocery and drugstore employees that are publicly traded or employ three hundred more, or more people nationwide and employ more than ten employees per store in, in the city of Malibu. The ordinance specifically prohibits employers from lowering employees' wages to offset the hero pay increase. It also prohibits retaliation against employees who assert their rights pursuant to the ordinance. That includes discharge, suspension, demotion, discipline, lowering wages, or holiday premium pay, and discrimination. Additionally, all employees would have a private right of action to challenge any retaliation against them in Superior Courts, including recovery of attorney's fees for up to three years after the violations occurred. The city is also, has available to it administrative citations for employers who violate the ordinance. For example, a failure to pay a hero pay to an employee could result in a hundred, hundred-dollar citation fine for each day of the violation occurred. I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, the ordinance requires a four-fifths vote of the council for adoption. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cotty. Do we have public speakers on this item?
Yes, we have two speakers. They are Scott Dietrich and Nick Burrow. We'll hear from Scott Dietrich first.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I like it that you're gonna spend other people's money. If this was the city wanting to pay these guys, I think that'd be fine. But I don't think the city should tell private companies what to pay. And if you're gonna do it, well, what about the guys at Malibu Animal Hospital that take care of your dog or cat? Or the folks in the gas station? To single out, and, and I'm not saying these folks don't deserve it. In fact, the private companies actually offered them hero pay. But for a government entity to get involved in this, I think philosophically wrong. We wanna help them, but this is not the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Our next speaker is Nick Burrow.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Nick Burrow, and I'm here to speak on item four E on the agenda. On behalf of Malibu Grocers, the California Grocers Association respectfully asks that you do not move forward with a grocery worker premium pay ordinance, given the numerous negative consequences to grocery workers, neighborhoods, and the grocery industry. Based on the negative consequences experienced in other jurisdictions with similar ordinances, we must oppose the ordinance for both policy and legal reasons. We agree that grocery workers serve a vital and essential role during the pandemic. They have worked tirelessly to keep stores open for consumers, allowing our communities to have uninterrupted access to food and medications. To protect our employees, grocery stores were among the first and continue to implement numerous safety protocols, including providing PPE and masks, performing wellness checks, enhancing sanitation and cleaning, limiting store capacity, and instituting social distance requirements, among other actions. On top of increased safety measures, grocery employees have also received unprecedented amount of supplemental pay leave for, to care for themselves and their families, in addition to already existing leave benefits. Grocers have also provided employees additional pay and benefits in various forms, including hourly and bonus pays averaging two to three dollars, along with other significant forms of support. All of these safety efforts and additional benefits clearly demonstrates grocers' dedication and appreciation for their employees. Most importantly, the industry has been fierce advocates for grocery workers to be prioritized for vaccinations. The grocery worker pay ordinance would mandate grocery stores provide additional pay beyond what is economically feasible, with nearly thirty percent increase in employment costs. This significant increase would severely impact store viability and result in increased prices for groceries, limited operating hours, reduced hours for workers, fewer workers per store, and most concerning possible store closures. These negative impacts from the ordinance would be felt most acutely by independent grocers, ethnic format stores, and stores serving low-income neighborhoods. We respectfully implore the council to not move forward with the grocery pay ordinance at this time. If council must bring the ordinance forward for a vote at this time, we ask that you oppose its passage. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick.
That concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. We're back here to the council. Bruce?
Yeah, I'd like to make some comments.
Please.
Get rid of this. So, you know, multiple cities and counties in California, as John stated, have enacted temporary hero pay ordinances that require this. For, it's for a temporary period of time, and it's a relatively minor amount of money in the grand scheme of things. To date, these ordinances have been adopted by, among others, LA County, the cities of Los Angeles, Santa Monica, West Hollywood, Berkeley, Oakland, Long Beach, Pomona, Santa Ana, and Coachella, and also the city and county of San Francisco, San Francisco. And cities outside of California have adopted similar ordinances. Ordinarily, I am opposed to government regulation of the economic relationship between private employers and employees, just as Scott stated. And I prefer to see the free market and labor relations forces play themselves out. In this instance, however, I am struck by the unfair position that the relatively few grocery and pharmacy employees in Malibu find themselves in view of the ordinances adopted by all of these other nearby cities, especially when one considers that the risks of the frontline workers in Malibu include exposure to multiple residents from those other areas that have brought the plague into Malibu and expose our workers. Before the meeting today, I was both surprised and pleased to receive public, written public comment in support of this proposal from Mary Stanley. And Mary is a staunch Republican, who I would expect to oppose a proposal of this nature for the same reasons that I typically oppose government regulation of economic relationships between private employers and employees, particularly at the local level. Yet Mary supports this proposal for the same reasons I do, namely, lack of fairness of denying our local workers the same benefit that's been granted by so many other cities in California. And particularly, as I said, where, where the, the workers are being exposed by people coming from those other cities. I understand Kroger has closed a handful of stores in some areas and has, that have adopted these ordinances. And it's been reported that Kroger claims the closures were promoted by the ordinances. Personally, I find it difficult to believe that a multi-billion dollar company closed stores solely because of the adoption of a temporary legislation that imposes a relatively minor cost on a given store in the grand scheme of things and for only a temporary period of time. I suspect those stores would have been, were not long for this world anyway. They were probably underperforming. Nonetheless, some Malibu residents have expressed concern that Kroger would shutter its Malibu location if we adopt this ordinance. I reached out to a Kroger representative and asked if that was likely to occur and also suggested that it would be a public relations boon if they were to just voluntarily do this. I got a long response, which I, I'm not sure if everybody got this. I got a long response that, that gave all the arguments that were just presented by the labor representative, but nowhere did they say they would be closing the Malibu store or taking any negative reaction against the Malibu employees. Now, the unions opposing this, which is kind of strange, I, I don't think I've ever seen before a union opposing a benefit to its, to its, its members. But I get, I understand the argument they're making. But if I'm not mistaken, this is the same union that's brought a legal challenge to a similar ordinance in Long Beach, and that was rejected by the District Court and its. and that was rejected by the district court, and it's now pending in the Ninth Circuit. Now, Ralph's is just a few minutes from my home. This will only apply to Ralph's, Pavilions, Whole Food, and CVS. The smaller stores, as much as it may be unfair to their employees, aren't affected mainly because that's not how the ordinances are written elsewhere. The ordinances are intended to apply only to large multi-state corporations, basically. But I shop at Ralph's all the time. The staff there is great. I know, I know most of the employees. They know me. I go there. I thank them all the time for the fact that they're risking their health for our benefit. And they also have very low turnarounds. Amazing, actually, to go to a grocery store and see the same people year after year. That's unusual in my experience. That's one of the reasons I want to see them taken care of. It seems to me, again, unfair that they would be denied a benefit that is being given to their fellow employees who are just a couple miles away down the road. It doesn't make sense. Either should be, no one gets this, or everyone gets this. Everyone's similarly situated. I wouldn't care if they raised the prices at the market for the temporary period of time across the board and that I'd be basically derivatively funding this. That would be fine with me. I suspect it would be fine with most of my friends and neighbors who shop at these grocery stores. And for all those reasons, I think that this makes sense. It is, it requires, as John said, a four fifths vote. That's because it's an urgency ordinance. I was, along with Mike, I don't know if Mike is still sponsoring this, but I was one of the people who wanted this presented. I have to say that if it doesn't pass by four fifths, we could do it with a majority at a future meeting, but I think this is too important an issue with, I understand the policy issues in both directions, to bring it back for a majority vote if it doesn't pass. So I, you know, I think it's gonna be up or down tonight. Four fifths, I hope we have unanimity, but I understand there are interesting policy issues here. Thanks.
Thank you, Bruce. Paul?
A question on the fourth paragraph from the bottom of page four of five. And as I read that, it seems like it's saying that if somebody has been, if Ralph's, for example, was giving people some hero pay right now, and we pass this, they would have to do an additional five dollars on top of whatever they're already giving them. And I don't have any idea if anybody already is giving them extra. An amount beyond their contract. Is that, do I read that correctly?
That's not accurate. There is a credit for voluntary hazard pay. So if a store is already paying hazard pay in a voluntary, voluntary fashion, they would get an offset up to five dollars. So if they're giving three dollars, they would owe an additional two.
They just wouldn't get a retroactive credit, Paul?
Oh, that's, this is if they wanted to get credit for something they gave people four months ago.
If they're currently giving it now.
If they're currently giving it now, then it would be whatever it is to bring it up to five. Okay. Thank you.
Additional comments, Karen?
The county orders are being lifted on June fifteenth. Is that the most recent announcement?
I have heard something like that, although I've yet to see any formal order from the governor or the county.
Okay, I mean, I would expect that this is, this comes to an end when the county orders are lifted. Okay, if it is June fifteenth, we're talking about a pretty short period of time.
That's correct. Right now, it would remain in effect unless extended until June twenty sixth. If the county health orders are lifted, we will bring this back to the council for consideration to repeal potentially.
Okay, okay. That's all I wanted to ask. Thank you.
For myself, I think between Bruce and I, we've talked to or heard from pretty much every market in Malibu. And while I agree with him on some of the issues here, on some of the legal potential issues are, I understand the reasons to vote against it. I do think Malibu has been overrun by people coming into our town. And I agree that this makes sense. It looks like it's gonna be for a relatively short period. And I, every time I go in the market, I marvel at the staffs in the market. Just there in that building all day long with hordes of people coming in. And so I absolutely support this. And do we have, oh, Paul?
I was just gonna call the question.
Okay, do we have a motion in a second?
I'll second.
I don't know. Who made the motion?
We don't yet have a motion or a second.
Okay.
I'll make the motion approved then.
Okay, thank you. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Karen, second.
I can read the title.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Orness forty-five U is an urgency ordinance adding chapter five point seven zero to the Malibu Municipal Code relating to hazard pay requirements for employees working frontline positions in grocery retail and drug retail establishments in the same, in the city of Malibu during the COVID nineteen pandemic, buying the same from the California Environmental Quality Act and declaring the urgency thereof. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Yuren?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grisanti?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
All right. I'm going shopping at Ralph's early tomorrow morning. Mikey, real quick question.
Yes.
Item seven A, which is the appointment of somebody to the Parks and Rec Commission. I mean, we're making pretty good progress. That should be a real quick one, and that may fill out that commission and just, so if there's a way to sort of allow us to go through that.
I think you guys have done such an amazing job as a group that we're pretty, we're pretty good. I know the amount of speakers on, I'm gonna, when we get to D, which is next, I'm gonna talk about the speakers, which we streamlined, hopefully. So I think, I think we're, let's just keep on task right now, would be where I'm at.
Where do you want to go next, then? For D?
For D, but I want to check first, since this one is gonna be the long one of the night, it looks like. Does anyone need a short break?
You don't want to do seven A. That'd be real quick. Seven A is like a, it's an appointment.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, let's get the commission full, and then we can come back to step four D.
I defer to the greater wisdom of the group. Okay?
You're not gonna get that here, but nice try.
I think it makes sense to then take a break because we're gonna be, otherwise, we'll be breaking in the middle of seven D, which is four D, which doesn't make sense.
Right. That's why I brought that up. Okay, so wait a minute. Do we need to make a motion to change the agenda on the fly here?
I'd like to make a motion to move seven A next, so we can get that done before we go to the big item.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, can we have roll call on that, please?
Councilmember Yuren?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, let's go to seven A. Council appointment to the Parks and Rec Commission. Paul?
My first appointment to Parks and Rec has had a, a change in his family dynamic, which resulted in him resigning. And I'm very pleased at this point put forward Dane Scopehammer. He grew up in Malibu, well-known guy. Worked in different businesses in the community. He has a small child, which I think is a part of the dynamic that Parks and Rec needs. And he's definitely committed to Malibu. So I think we'll love him.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion to move that.
Hang on one sec, one sec. Do we have any public speakers on this item?
You don't have any public speakers on this item, and you don't need a motion since it's just Mayor Protem Grisanti's appointment.
Perfect.
Okay, great. Bruce?
Just a quick comment. I was gonna say, Paul, great. I'm really happy you're making this appointment because I had wanted, I was torn on appointing Dane to another commission, but I had already decided to appoint someone else first, and I think he's gonna be great. So I'm glad you're doing that. Thank you.
He's a good Malibu person.
Okay, so we're done with seven A, and then we are gonna take a short break. Back by, it's eight nineteen.
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty. Let's be ready to go, okay?
Okay, councilors, if you can hear me there, Steve. Okay, there's Karen. I think we're just waiting for Bruce. I see Adrian come in live. Hi Adrian, good to see you.
See you too.
Richard, Gail, Trevor, John, it's a lot of planners and lawyers showing up all of a sudden. Okay, we just think we're just, is Bruce on yet? I've lost, I don't see Bruce on my screen at the moment. Where'd he go? Oh, I see. Somehow his name doesn't show up. Okay.
I think Bruce might be having some technical difficulties. His video's on but not showing, so I'm assuming he's having some problems.
Maybe the lights aren't on. That was a joke.
Do we know if he can hear us? Guess not.
Maybe we should start a pool on when we can meet in person again.
Can I have second week, second meeting in June?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be nice. Of course, I will forever be the only mayor in Malibu history to never have a meeting in public. Planned it that way, far in advance. Alex, any update here?
Yeah, give us one second. We're gonna have to call Bruce and get in touch with him.
Okay, we have a quorum, so I don't wanna start without him, but I don't wanna wait forever either. Oh wait, here he comes. Some, and then different connection apparently. Wait.
Okay, so I'm gonna try to restart my computer, but I got on my cellphone while I'm waiting, so I won't hold things up.
Okay, thank you. You should probably disconnect your other connection. I guess it will when you restart it. Okay, so we're gonna go forward with item 4D, which is amendments to Title 17 of the Malibu Municipal, Municipal Code, Chapter 17.46, which is the wireless telecommunications antennas and facilities, and sections 2.2 and 3.16, Chapter 13, and Appendix 1, which is Table B, permitted uses of the local coastal program, Local Implementation Plan, to modify regulations, procedures, and application requirements for the installation of wireless communications facilities. Can we have a report, please?
Good evening, Mayor Pearson and members of City Council. We do have a PowerPoint presentation for you. Gail Carish will be doing the first presentation, so if I could have Alex pull up the right presentation for her, and she's gonna be presenting, there you go, give you an overview of all the regulations, and then I will do a second presentation with more of the specifics of the proposed changes to the ordinance.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gail Carish. I'm a partner at Best Bestin Krieger. I practice in telecommunications, and I'm going to give you a very brief presentation. I know we had a study session earlier, so I'm just gonna run through a few slides just to point out or remind people of some of the limitations on local authority. And so as an overview here on your limitations on your authority, and here I'm speaking about primarily your authority to exercise citing oversight of citing of wireless facilities outside of the public right of way we dealt with in the emergency ordinance inside the public right of way. So it's very similar sorts of situations. There are a few differences. In terms of just general policy, there has been over several decades a national wireless policy that is that no decision or regulation at a local level, at a state or local level can create an effective prohibition of personal wireless services. So there is a federal policy on having wireless services available. There's also a national policy on RF emissions. That is that the Federal Communications Commission establishes the guidelines for safe emissions, and at a local level, you are not able to regulate based on concerns about RF emissions, but you can ensure that the applicant who's proposing a facility is going to comply with the federal guidelines. There are also a number of timelines required for action. That is deadlines and remedies for a failure to act on wireless applications that are are unique to wireless as compared to other types of planning decisions that you might be making. There are certain modifications to existing wireless facilities that because of either federal or state law must be approved. Two categories. One is eligible facilities request. That's a federal law that was adopted in 2012 that requires a certain modifications to existing wireless facilities to be approved. The second is a more recent statute that was adopted on a temporary basis in the state of California. And it applies only to qualifying emergency generators at macro cell sites. And if the, an application is received for a qualifying emergency generator, meaning it has a certain size and all that, then as outlined in AB 2421, then that also has to be approved. And then as a general matter, the California Public Utilities Commission, unlike in the public right of way where they have a lot of regulations regarding the safe installation of communications and electric facilities, they have since, since the beginning of wireless deployment really, issued a general order, General Order 159A, that by and large defers to local government on land use regulation of macro cell sites. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna go through just as a reminder, some of the, well, all of the shot clocks and the remedies that are available. Next slide, please. So as I, as I mentioned, shot clocks are timelines for action on an application. It's generally understood that they include appeals, and they also include all the types of authorizations that might be needed from a local government to actually deploy the facility. Local governments can't impose a moratorium on accepting applications or processing them. And in the applicable shot clock will depend on the type of request. There are actually five in federal law and one in state law that that's relevant. A shot clock is the timeline for action. It starts when the application is filed, and it can be reset or told only in certain circumstances. One is to issue a timely notice of incompleteness, and the second is by agreement with the applicant. Next slide. So these are the shot clocks, the most relevant shot clocks that are out there, and local governments are required to comply with eligible facilities requests. I've discussed already, small wireless facilities, that's a category of wireless applications that meet certain size limits under the FCC's 2018 order. There are two shot clocks there. There is for other co-locations that don't meet, you know, they're non-small wireless co-locations or not an EFR. They have a 90-day shot clock. There's a catch-all category of 150 days for others. So that would be like a brand-new macro cell site. And then there's the emergency generator law that I mentioned that has a 60-day shot clock. Next slide, please. I mentioned that one way to toll a shot clock is to issue a timely notice of incompleteness. There are also shot clocks for doing that. To be timely, most of the categories of shot clocks require that the local government issue their notice of incompleteness within 30 days of initial submission. There's an exception, an even shorter shot clock for sending out your notice of incompleteness for small cells and for the emergency generators, only 10 days. And then for all of them, once applicant responds to the notice of incompleteness, you have a 10-day window, again, to, if there are still items that are incomplete, to send out a further notice in order to stop the shot clock again. Next slide, please. There are remedies if you miss a shot clock. There is currently the one federal remedy that is for the eligible facilities request. That's a deemed granted remedy. For the California Emergency Generator Shot Clock, there's a state deemed granted remedy for the 90 and 150-day co-location and other category shot clocks. There is a state deemed granted remedy. There is currently no deemed granted remedy available in state or federal law for missing a small cell shot clock. However, there is in federal law what is considered or described by the FCC as an enhanced remedy in that if you miss a shot clock, it's presumed to be an illegal effective prohibition of service. I have a little asterisk there because there's two state law, two state bills pending that are important in this area that I'm gonna discuss next. Next slide, please. So the two pending state bills are AB 537. That's the one that would expand the deemed granted remedy that currently exists in state law to all types of wireless applications. So that means it would include small cell applications. And the way that remedy works is a applicant sends a deemed granted notice, and then that puts the burden on the city to go to court in order to seek judicial review of the application of that notice. That's in the local government committee. There's a hearing set this week. And your assembly member is actually on that local government committee. The other pending state bill is a small cell bill, and it would require the city to make any infrastructure that it owns in the public right of way, particularly light poles and traffic signal poles, available for wireless and wireline facilities. It has shot clocks for reviewing the applications to use those poles that are even shorter than the FCC shot clocks, only 45 days in the bill, 60 days if you were to get a bundle of 300 applications. And while this proposed law would purport to preempt local authority in order to assist the wireless industry to expand broadband, it actually doesn't require the wireless industry to expand broadband facilities or to close a digital divide. And that bill is going to be at a hearing at the Energy, Utilities, and Communications Committee on April 19th, and your senator is on that committee. Next slide, please. So I mentioned that there are some modifications that must be approved. I just want to run through those briefly. Next slide, please. The one category under federal law, eligible facilities request. These are, so you have to have an existing wireless facility. And the, this category of requests that, that the local government must approve would be ones that, under the FCC rules, they consider to be non-substantial modifications. It can be adding new transmission equipment, removing transmission equipment, replacing transmission equipment. There, you have no discretion if they qualify under the size and volume and other limits of this statute in the FCC regulations. You have no discretion to deny the application. It must be approved. And, excuse me, one of the important things that the FCC recently clarified in a new order interpreting their own rules was that when they're, when you're looking at concealment, one of the, one of the things that would kick an application out of the box of being an eligible facilities request would be if the, if the proposed change would defeat the concealment, the concealment elements of an existing facility. The FCC has interpreted that to mean it really has to be a stealth structure. And so if the concealment is something like a stand of trees or something like that, that is not the structure itself, then you could not argue that adding to the height of the facility, for example, that would bring it above the tree line, would defeat the concealment. Now you really have to look at that it is a stealth structure, and a stealth facility in the FCC's definition is one that is designed to look like something other than a wireless tower or base station. Next slide, please. The other category is emergency standby generators. As I mentioned, this was recently adopted legislation here in California that really was to address concerns about the reliability of wireless networks when there are power shut-offs during fire season. And this is only in effect for three years. If the emergency standby generator meets certain requirements, then you have to approve it. The rules only apply to macro cell towers, however. They specifically do not apply to rooftop sites, which are common kind of site that you have in Malibu. They don't apply to small cells and other that you commonly have or outdoor indoor distributed antenna systems. Next slide, please. And then I'm just gonna talk very briefly on some of the limitations of regulating location safety and aesthetics. Next slide. So generally, local governments can regulate safety to the extent not preempted by state or federal regulations. And you can regulate aesthetics, of course. However, some things to bear in mind. Your, your citing standards must be reasonable. Aesthetic regulations must not prohibit or effectively prohibit the provision of personal wireless services. Spacing, separation, setback requirements are subject to the same federal standards, so they can't create an effective prohibition or entirely, you know, ban carriers from being in your, your city and providing wireless service. And then in summary, really, you can say no to specific installations other than to specific installations other than the ones that you must approve under federal or state law. But if you do deny a decision, a decision has to be supported by substantial evidence and be in writing. And I think that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. I think you're muted, Adrian.
Great, thank you. Next slide, please. The wireless communication facility regulations have been bifurcated into two categories. Wireless facilities in the public right-of-way and wireless facilities on land other than the public right-of-way. This was done for consistency with how other cities are regulating wireless facilities in the public right-of-way and to permit an urgency ordinance that would be immediately implemented. Last year, the council adopted Phase One of this process, including the adoption of the urgency ordinance and under a separate resolution, the design and location standards and standard conditions. The item before you today is Phase Two of that process. It consists of an ordinance to replace and repeal Chapter 17.46 of the Malibu Municipal Code and update, it's an update to the local coastal program. The development standards, conditions of approval and basic application requirements are to be adopted in a separate resolution. Next slide, please. One of the main changes to Chapter 17.46 is the entitlement process for wireless facilities. Instead of a site plant review or conditional use permit, wireless applications will be processed as either a Level 1 or a Level 2 wireless permit or WP. WPs will have their own custom findings and process. The appeal process for a Type 1 is currently designed to be heard by a hearing officer. And please note that the Planning Commission recommended that these appeals be heard by City Council or another body appointed by City Council. Staff's only concern is timing. Given the city would only have a few days to make a decision on an appeal due to shot clock requirements. This would be a similar process in the process outlined for wireless facilities in the public right-of-way and would only be for applications that qualify as a small cell facility, eligible facility request, which are the modifications to existing facilities and co-locations provided that these applications do not include a waiver. Next slide, please. The reason for adopting the engineering, design and location standards, standard conditions of approval and basic application requirements as a separate resolution is to permit the city to quickly react to the constantly evolving technological industry and to address new future state and federal regulations. The resolution includes design standards, conditions of approval and basic application requirements. The basic application requirements were added to the resolution as a request from the Planning Commission. These include the electrical, fire, safety, submittal requirements that the public requested, except for those requiring de-energizing the facilities. Next slide. The local coastal program update includes adding the procedures for both the wireless right-of-way permits or WRP's and the WP's, which are permits for both the public right-of-way and land outside the public right-of-way. Similar to the municipal code updates, the design and location standards would be added to the local coastal program by reference to the corresponding resolutions. Next slide, please. Stated in the, in the last presentation, the city has no discretion to deny a qualifying eligible facilities request. Both eligible facility requests as small cell facilities are limited to the more stringent 60-day shot clock. As a result, eligible facility requests were added to the coastal development permit exemption as well as public utility pole replacements and temporary wireless facilities that are damaged as a result of a natural disaster. And small cell facilities were added to the de minimis waiver process, which allows the implementation of the local coastal program and compliance with the shot clock requirements. All other facilities will be processed as administrative coastal development permit. Next slide, please. There was an error in one of the findings stating existing facility, instead of proposed facility, staff is requesting the same change in the, you know, both the municipal code and local coastal program since the findings are duplicate, duplicative in these two codes. Next slide. Also, staff is recommending changes to the design and location standards based on our last meeting with Mr. Scott McCullough. And in response to public comments, staff is recommending the following changes. The first change is, in addition to requiring a backup power supply for wireless facilities as a recommendation from Planning Commission, we added that these facilities be also in compliance with the California Fire Code, Section 1206.2.2. And the second change is to extend the full zone of the new freestanding wireless facilities from 100% to 110% of the height of the silly from residential zone properties. Next slide, please. Staff is also requesting the change to basic application requirements, numbers eight and nine, to include that electrical, structural and civil plants be prepared under the responsible charge of and sealed by a California licensed professional engineer. Next slide, please. Correspondence is requesting that we increase the buffer from from school, parks, playgrounds and residential zone districts. The resolution includes a requirement, the city expressly designates residential, public open space and recreational vehicle park zoning districts, parks and schools as the least appropriate possible location and the absolute last choice for citing. We have also included a requirement that a minimum site preparation from schools, playgrounds and parks be set at 500 feet. This map is, this map of the city shows commercial districts in red, residential in the sand or taupe color, open space and private recreational facilities in gray. As can, as it can be seen on this map, commercial zoning districts make up about 10% roughly of the real estate in Malibu. And these areas are mostly surrounded by residential zoning districts. And they're mostly scattered along Pacific Coast Highway. The largest area of commercial is the civic center area. But the civic center area is also surrounded by residential. And the Santa Monica College will be built right in the middle of that area. And the Legacy Park is also in the middle of that area. And so the 500-foot radius that is already incorporated into the ordinance from parks create a radius that make most of that area not really suitable or usable for wireless facilities. So a 500-foot buffer from only residential zoning districts overlapped all of the zoning, all the commercial zones and most of the city. And even a 50-foot buffer in conjunction with the 500-foot buffers are proposed by staff for school, parks and playgrounds overlap with most of the commercial zoning properties, which is why staff did not add any other buffers from residential zone properties. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that the City Council introduce on first reading ordinance number 484, direct staff to schedule a second reading and adoption, an adoption of ordinance 484, adopts resolution number 21-17 related to Zontex Amendment number 16-005 and LCPA number 16-007. And determines that the amendments to be exempt from CEQA after the, after the ordinance and resolution are adopted, the the LCP, excuse me, the ZTA will be implemented immediately. And the LCP will be submitted to the California Coastal Commission for certification. Staff continues to coordinate with coastal staff on these code updates, and that concludes my presentation, and we're here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Adrian. Appreciate it. Now we're going to go to the public, and I just want to run something by the council in talks with some of the public on this item, seeing as there's intense interest. I'm hoping it's okay. Some of the people organized, and I would like to allow them to give minutes as the Planning Commission did. And actually, I think going forward, we should look at just adopting that as we have learned more about Zoom, but that's another subject. So with the council's consent, the people that have really brought this forward have organized to give minutes to the three experts. One minute per speaker, so each of the three speakers will get eight minutes. There's other speakers I know. If people want to donate minutes outside of that, that's welcome, either side of the issue. And as far as I'm concerned, and I just want to see if there's consensus on that. It'll save us about half an hour and streamline the presentations and communication, I think, from everybody. Bruce?
I fully support that and hope that we have an item brought back to do that for every meeting, for every item.
Okay.
To clarify, to clarify, this is also, you're allowing some of our old rules that you could donate, give up all your time to donate one minute to another person to allow that person to speak up to eight minutes. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I meant. Thank you. Sort of our traditional old in-person rule here. And I will point out, yeah, sorry.
I'm saying, I'm on board for that, Mikey, so.
Okay, so it looks like we have consent. So with that said, let's go to the public speakers.
Yes, we have 17 speakers and then some time deferrals as well. So the speakers are Mark Graham, Scott Dietrich, Liz Barris, Craig Hill, Joe Drummond, Nicole McGinley, Akai Ming, Jenny Rosinko, Stephanie Sunwu, Jeff Blauks, Stephanie Kason, or Chassion, I believe, Linda Gibbs, Susan Foster with five people ceding time to her, Tony Simmons with five people ceding time to him, and Scott McCullough with five people ceding time to him, and then Lonnie Gordon and Jessica Isles.
Okay, great.
Our first speaker will be Mark Graham.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor Pearson, council members and staff, Mark Graham, Elk Grove. Thank you for this opportunity. Last Friday, I sent you two emails about the significant gap in coverage and the court opinion in the Ninth Circuit from last year in the case of City of Portland versus United States. Today, I sent you an analysis by attorney Andrew Campanelli of the FCC Order 18-133 and its effect on the city's regulatory power over cell antennas. I hope you had time to review those on short notice. As of today, the controlling case law on an effective prohibition of cellphone service in the Ninth Circuit is Metro PCS versus City and County of San Francisco, 2005. The way it works is this. If the city says in your municipal code that the applicant has to prove they have a significant gap in coverage and that their proposed cell antenna is the least intrusive means of closing that gap, then they have to prove it. If you say it's required, then it's required. If you say that you will require drive test data as the FCC requires as evident, but you will not accept propagation maps unless they give you all the data, the model and the assumptions behind the propagation maps, then that's what's required. You see, the city has the ability to essentially create your own court for reviewing cell antenna applications. It's not a court, but it's like a court. You make the rules of evidence and you say what is required. In your court, you make fact-finding determinations that support either allowing or denying the application for a permit. Now, the US District Court is not going to overturn your fact-finding determinations. But if the city has failed to create this court, which is really your process for reviewing applications, the US District Court will nail you. It will say you cannot deny their application because they failed to do something that you did not require. Does that make sense? If you say it's required, then it is. If you say these are the rules of evidence, then they are. If you make fact-finding, if you make fact-finding determinations based on your requirements and your rules of evidence, you will be fine because the US District Court is not going to overturn that. The only way you could blow this is exactly what staff has proposed, which is for the city to fail to set all this up, to fail to say this is required and these are the rules of evidence. Verizon agrees with me. They mention the significant gap in coverage on five different pages of their letter, Pages 3, 11, 12, 13 and 15. Please ask your attorneys whether the city has the regulatory power per the TCA and current case law to do what I have described. You do have that power, and I am asking you to get your attorneys to tell you that. Your residents will be grateful, and so will I. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Our next speaker is Scott Dietrich.
Okay, there I am. Sorry about the delay. There's a couple of things that I wanted to bring up for your consideration. First of all, aesthetics is an obvious concern. And I've seen some of the really ugly, ugly pictures. And if somebody put one of these things with all the wires hanging down on the equipment in front of your house on a pole, that could actually really diminish your view and the property values. But the main concern that I had is I got to thinking, so we get a small cell tower put up on a pole. It's already got Edison and Verizon and cable and who knows what on it, probably a couple cable. We just went through a real frustrating experience for five years trying to underground utilities in our neighborhood. And basically Edison came back and said, we're going to make it so expensive that you can't, it's not even feasible because they don't want to do it. They don't want things to go underground where there will be no maintenance because they make their money on maintenance and repair. But if you add a small cell tower, I'm wondering the impact on people trying to underground. Now, a lot of us feel we should make that a citywide policy and underground the whole thing and and try to avoid Edison using private contractors, and we could save an awful lot of money and get economies of scale, but this is just going to complicate it. So I guess we have to go forward on it in some way, and there's a lot of concerns for safety that people have. But if we go forward, one of the requirements we should stipulate is that they cannot charge anything extra should a neighborhood want to ground. So I think that's a consideration that needs to be discussed, and I've heard no discussion of it so far. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott.
Our next speaker is Liz Barris.
Okay, hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Liz.
Okay, hey there. So I really agree with a lot of stuff Mark was saying. And I was going to speak to some things that have already been spoken to, so I'll switch it up a little bit. I'll just let you guys know that the City of Malibu is liable, okay? Currently, and by the way, I highly recommend that you get Andrew Campanelli to make a presentation on all the ways that you, the city, all the rights the city has, you know. I respectfully disagree with the attorney from Craig, the original one who spoke, I forget her name. I respectfully disagree with many of the things she was telling the council about with Ms. Carish, what she was saying. But Andrew could make a great presentation to you about how you can avoid these antennas in your area. But I just want you guys to know, I am actually suing over this right now. Edison is now in the cell tower business. Any transmitter, they're advertising for people to contact them to hang their transmitter equipment on their poles, and they want to, you know, they want to get all that business. So you will be seeing a transmitter all over the place because Edison is all over the place. They're using their smart grid infrastructure, they're using everything. And so they recently put a transmitter up within a couple hundred feet from where I live. We are suing the County of Los Angeles, and we're also suing Edison. The City of Malibu will be liable. And I highly recommend that you create in your ordinance a way to, you know, you could say people that have either cancer, neurological illness, any kind of pre-existing condition that'll be exacerbated by this radiation that they don't, and by the way, 500 feet is nothing. The wireless industry is known to crank the power up. If you give them a limitation, they will actually crank the power even higher than before. 500 feet does not protect anybody, and these bills that are in the legislature right now, they're demanding that a transmitter go every 500 feet. But if you guys put something in your ordinance where these residents are protected and you cannot put a transmitter within, let's say, 1,500 feet, that's the cancer, you know, zone. There's a 350% increase in cancer when residents live within 1,500 feet of a transmitter for an average of five years. Okay, so we know that 5G is like 20 or more times powerful than 4G. I mean, the power density is so enormous. I'm speaking to you right now in my car. I no longer can occupy my apartment. I live in Topanga. My shielding does not block 5G. My upstairs neighbor upgraded. I have nothing that can block it. I'm 200 feet away. I'm in the car with extension cords. I sleep and work in my car now because this radiation makes me vomit, okay? I have a very strong reaction to it. Now, most people don't have that.
That's your time.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much, Liz.
Our next speaker is Craig Hill.
Okay, here we go. Your natural inclination might be to find a middle ground to craft something that's fair. But in this case, the field of regulation is so dominated by the federal code, which has been tightly vetted by industry lobbyists, much of it written by them. So the telcos have already carved up the whole pie, leaving just a few crumbs for you to regulate. Now, I believe the planning commission as a group gave into that usually sensible fairness-based approach. Several commissioners even said things like paraphrasing. Let's just let the telcos do what they want. They know their own business best. But they'll already be doing what they want regardless of how strict your regulations are. Moreover, the federal code doesn't speak to the circumstances of our high fire hazard severity zone. So we have to take care of ourselves on that, which means implementing the most strict comprehensive safety measures that you can do without regard to the cost or how inconvenient it might be to obtain the certifications in advance. And you have the rationale of the general plan. We citizens have already decided to, quote, "sacrifice urban and suburban conveniences to preserve our rural lifestyle." I would suggest that, yes, having reliable voice and text coverage is a necessity, particularly in emergencies, given that the telcos have been allowed to dismantle our copper wire lines. But having enough 5G bandwidth for your kids in the backseat to be live streaming the latest iteration of Grand Theft Auto as you navigate the PCH obstacle course, that's a suburban convenience none of us really need, especially if it means more poles blocking views and contributing to fire hazards. And by the way, industry will tell you how fire safety installations are, but they're not perfect. And while the likelihood of risk is low, the potential consequences are catastrophic. Now, you can limit the number of facilities by requiring a wide separation. Verizon, for example, advertises that 5G towers are good for 1,500 feet. So you could make, call it 13, 20 feet, which is exactly a quarter of a mile, easy to understand. And that would be fair enough, or far enough within the 1,500-foot spec that you couldn't be accused of requiring something impracticable. The commission didn't adequately discuss setbacks. I think it may have been getting late. Anyway, you could do much better in keeping facilities away from houses, schools, and scenic views. Even a small minimum distance could help. And you can insist that all facilities, including small sites, have backup power for 72 hours and that it be placed underground where it can be fire safe. You can require EMF pollution insurance, which will seem prudent the first time a lawsuit is filed. Listen to McCullough and McGinley and include the recommendations from Foster and Simmons to include all application requirements. You'll be glad to have that documentation when a fire does occur and there's litigation. Most importantly, require public hearings, even if the notice period must be brief so that the telcos have to face the public in public. And every application will feature some unique aspect that a single hearing officer might not foresee. So finally, consider whether you could set a strict baseline regulations that automatically if the shot clock is missed and it's deemed approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joe Drummond.
Hi there.
Hi, Joe.
I'm not going to speak long. I'm just here, Honorable Mayor Mike D. and City Council. I'm here in support and endorse the recommendation that will be made by Scott McCullough in Malibu for Safe Tech that the other speakers will address tonight. I don't believe that 500 feet is enough distance between these wireless facilities and residential, recreational, and/or school sites. I do believe in the dangers of 5G and satellite transmitters to our families and vulnerable population, and they definitely should not block scenic views or have any fire hazardous component. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe.
Our next speaker is Nicole McGinley.
Hello. Thank you all very much for your time and energy on this very important topic. There's been a lot of work that has gone into this massive packet, and I thank you all for your contributions. And counsel, I thank you for reading through this massive packet. I got to tell you, on the heels of finally getting to see my parents after a year and a half, coupled with just driving around in these beautiful green hills right now, and my garden is growing, and we've got blooming coriopsis in our open space, and our Malibu kids are a week away from being in-person learning at school. I feel our city and our collective spirits are getting back on track, and quite honestly, I'm feeling optimistic. I love that I get to call Malibu this collection of outside-the-box thinkers, artists, creators, and innovators, all having chosen this rural lifestyle to nourish, love, raise ourselves and our families in home. Updating this ordinance initiated to address the rush of wireless carriers and their relentless deployment applications. The goal is to allow the city to manage how, where, and when wireless facilities are installed throughout the city. We're so close to achieving that goal. If we just integrate these few proposed changes that we've submitted in all of our letters and in Scott McCullough's memo. For instance, require design to be overseen by a professional engineer. Resolve this setback and separation issues. This is where we need those outside-the-box thinkers so that we can protect Malibu's residential neighborhoods, schools, and parks. Require wireless providers to maintain adequate insurance with pollution coverage. Provide transparency and clarity about the process of appeals by having them heard by our elected officials. We have almost got this. Remember, we started this process with a handcrafted ordinance backed by over 200 residents. When that wasn't accepted, we cooperated by trying to work within the staff language. And the fact is, we agree with 95% of the staff's language. And what we're left with, this mere 5%, is all workable within what we understand you can do within the confines of the FCC regulations. Our goal was to find where our hands were not tied. And having done that, having given you markups and a proposal within staff's language that was carefully designed to be well within your authority, I think that is contributing to my optimism. And I believe that tonight we can adopt the community's redline markups with confidence, and you can help us keep our community fire safe. We all appreciate you and putting your community first. And I thank you very much for your time, and I'm very much looking forward to the rest of this meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nicole.
Our next speaker is Akai Yang.
I believe I have some slides. Oh, hello. Okay, good evening, everybody. My name's Akai Yang, and we live on Pointon for more than 34 years. And this is the wireless facility right in front of our house by our driveway. Even though this is located on public right-of-way, it is only 50 feet away from my garage, and it is only 20 feet away from my neighbor's bedroom. Next slide, please. It's a visual blight, and it's ugly, it's loud, and noisy. Yeah, we cannot discuss its long-term effect on our body and health. But it has this big sign next to it. Next slide, please. Next slide. Yeah, it says, "Stay Back." Radio frequency energy may exceed exposure limits. It is very disturbing. It is noisy because it is hot and has a fan in it going on around the clock to cool it down. And we always wonder what would happen if the fan went out and it gets too hot. Next slide, please. Yeah, we all still have nightmares about this terrible day only more than two years ago. Next slide, please. Yes, we all want to have good voice service for our cell phones, but we just don't want this in our front yard. Unless it's essential for voice services. It's ugly, it's noisy, it's disturbing, and it's dangerous. It is just not right to have this kind of facility in residential neighborhoods. By the way, we never have good cellphone reception in the house, even with this wireless facility in front of my yard. Next slide, please. As I understand, if we don't include the residential area separation and setback regulation in our proposed ordinance, this will continue to happen in anyone's front yard. Next, please. So please, please figure out a way to solve this. If we cannot come up with a proper way to solve this setback and separation issues that just keep the facility out of our residential area totally bending, unless it is absolutely necessary for voice services. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jenny Rosinko.
Okay, can you hear me now? Hello? Yes, I can hear you. Okay, great. All right, thank you. Hi, okay. Good evening. I'm here tonight to talk specifically about the process of application appeals and the process by which the community may appeal a wireless communication facility installation. As a Malibu resident living adjacent to PCH with multiple utility poles viewable from my front door, it's incredibly important to me that I, that should I need to appeal an application with respect to all the FCC shot clock rules, that my appeal be heard by an elected official. The community, which includes me, does not agree to the administrative processing of appeals and referral to an unknown hearing officer with unknown background and qualifications. We have consistently asked to preserve our right to appeal to an elected representative. The planning commission understood the importance of our request and included it in their recommendations. For some mysterious reason, city staff defied the planning commission and omitted this recommendation, although they did acknowledge that recommendation in tonight's meeting. But initially, they not only changed the language in the proposal for the ordinance regarding appeals and the planning commission's recommendation, but they did it in a non-transparent manner. Instead of using typical business practice of redlining correspondence and initiating changes, city staff altered the proposal without any evidence of alteration. Thankfully, members of the community's team caught the alterations. Throughout this WCF ordinance process of the past nine months, I've been a little confused by city staff's actions and motivations. And this most recent alteration of the proposal for the ordinance illustrates to me that perhaps city staff cannot be trusted to act with transparency and clarity. I do not believe that city staff has the community's best interests in mind when it comes to WCF applications and appeals. Please adopt the community's fervent request and the planning commission's recommendation that the process of appeals be heard by an elected official, not a hearing officer appointed by the city manager. Thank you so much for your time this evening. Thank you for reading my emails that I've sent throughout this process, and thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you, Jenny.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Sunwu.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Stephanie.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers Farr, Grisanti, Silverstein, Euring, and Mayor Pearson. Thank you for your careful consideration of this very important matter. I'm speaking tonight on the issue of adequate insurance. I respectfully urge council to require every carrier that wishes to install a wireless facility in Malibu to carry adequate insurance. Almost all of the carriers' current policies have a, quote, "pollution exclusion." The term pollution is confusing, but insurance companies actually consider radio frequency radiation emissions, like those emitted from wireless facilities, to be a form of pollution with high risk. So their general policies exclude coverage from liability in the event of a personal injury from RF emissions. Malibu, like other cities, should require pollution coverage with adequate policy limits through supplemental coverage from a licensed third-party insurance company. Along with many Wisconsin cities and counties, Encinitas here in California requires pollution coverage. I ask that you use the Encinitas Pollution Policy as guidance for Malibu's policy. If you do not require adequate insurance, Malibu or its taxpayers may end up having to bear liability if wireless carriers lack sufficient resources to fully indemnify the city. Why should we have to underwrite the carrier's business risk? A risk that even insurance companies acknowledge is high. And the reason that the risk is so high is that the definition- And the reason that the risk is so high is that the definition of a pollutant includes things that we cannot see, like artificially-produced electric fields, magnetic fields, electromagnetic fields, sound waves, microwaves, and all artificially-produced ionizing or non-ionizing radiation and waste. Just because wireless facilities produce pollutants that are invisible, we cannot be blind to them. Insurance companies know they're high-risk, and so should we. I do not envy the immense responsibility council has to protect Malibu and its citizens, but I do have faith that you will do everything in your power to protect Malibu from potential liability by requiring carriers to have adequate insurance, which is not at all unreasonable considering that even bottled water companies are liable for the safety of their product and therefore pay for product liability insurance. I respectfully ask that you create a strong policy and require every carrier to have and maintain proper and adequate insurance coverage, which includes pollution coverage. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Our next speaker is Jeff Lauks.
Are you there, Jeff?
Hello? Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Jeff.
Okay, sorry about that.
No problem.
You, Malibu City Council, and thank you, the community of Malibu. Gosh, I'm just overwhelmed with gratitude. But my name is Jeff Lauks, and my family and I and my four daughters moved to Malibu about fourteen years ago, and we're, we just love it. And I'm going to talk briefly about, just to read our Malibu mission and vision statement. As many of our fellow neighbors, we also are really, really grateful and love the pristine nature, you know, the clean ocean and beaches, the dark night skies where we can actually see the stars, the wildlife, the mountains, the quietude, and our unique rural character. And this is what the Malibu Mission Statement is really trying to protect, and I think we're all pretty familiar with that. But as citizens of Malibu, we have different opinions, but the one thing that we think we can all agree on is protecting Malibu and holding the Malibu Mission Statement and the Vision Statement. I won't read the Mission Statement, but I would like to just read the Vision Statement so we could just hear it out loud. "Malibu is a unique land and marine environment and residential community whose citizens have historically evidenced a commitment to sacrifice urban and suburban conveniences in order to protect the environment and lifestyle and to preserve unaltered natural resources and characteristics. The people of Malibu are a responsible custodian of the area's natural resources for present and future generations." You know, I am so grateful for May Ringe, who was, you know, used to own most of Malibu, as we probably, most of us know, but she almost single-handedly kept out the railroads from Malibu over a hundred years ago. You know, we could all thank her for not hearing a train go by when we're taking a walk on the beach or surfing. You know, Miss Ringe knew that Malibu was worth fighting for, and I know we all do as well. That's why we're here. You know, it was interesting to hear that one of the previous speakers, I was walking around our neighborhood at night the other day, and I know it's a little corny, but I do like hearing, you know, the frogs and the crickets chirping and hearing that owl's hoot. And so this was like a normal night, I was hearing that. And then I walked down, I believe it was the same street that the previous speaker, Kai, lives on, but I was walking down Bison Court, and I did hear this faint humming sound. This is like ten o'clock at night. So it sounded kind of like an air conditioner or something. As I got closer, it became louder and louder, and then I came across that ugly cell tower that we saw the photos of. And we, and that notice that said, you know, stay away. I also couldn't help but notice that there were no crickets or frogs chirping. That was kind of interesting. So all we heard was that obnoxious humming. So I just think it's so important that we take the steps now as a council and as a community to keep these things out of our residential neighborhoods and schools and give it possible.
That's your time.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Shazan.
Hello, everyone. Are you there?
Hi, Stephanie. I can hear you.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Pearson and City Council. I'm Stephanie Shazan. My husband Skip and I have lived in Malibu since nineteen ninety-five, and we moved to Point Dune in two thousand and three. Yeah, that's my house. We feel blessed. Life is good, but until in twenty nineteen, we received the notices regarding the Verizon cell tower, cell site. So I came to the city, the city of Malibu, in October twenty nineteen, and Adrian Fernandez told me that there was basically nothing the city could do about changing the location or where it's, what it looks like or anything like that. Even if the city tried, they would be sued. I feel that's kind of wrong on so many levels, just by sticking the tower right in front of my house, and that's it. Sorry, you don't have anything, you don't have any say in it. And I'm really concerned because of the health risks of having this antenna so close to my house. If you look at the, my bedroom window is right there in the top, right there on the second floor, in the green part of the house. Anyways, I feel it's best to have these cell towers in commercial zones instead of residential areas. It's, it's just, it's an eyesore. And in the future, if my husband and I do decide to sell our home, I do feel that it has lowered our property value just by looking at it. I mean, this is, this is what I have to be with for now and forever. So thank you for your time, and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Linda Gibbs.
Greetings, council.
Hi, Linda.
Hi. Many have suffered and sacrificed during this pandemic, but one industry that has not suffered or sacrificed is big tech. Let's not make any mistakes. Small cell antennas are not for cellular service. They are for the Internet of Things, data, big tech. Living in Malibu is a privilege and comes with great responsibility. As Jeff Lauk said, we make sacrifices. Fire victims are making adjustments, but SCE is not. The city and Coastal Commission has requirements on engineering all the way down to what kinds of trees and shrubs we are allowed to plant. Yet, the powerful and rich telecom industry that big tech relies on to be the trunks of their data want to do business in our city without engineering standards, fire standards, insurance, or oversight. Let me give you a few examples of their egregious sense of entitlement and arrogance. Both Verizon and AT&amp;T state, "Industry demands that planning director decisions be final with no appeal." First, let's recognize their arrogance that this first decision will always be in their favor, and they would never need to appeal. We residents have to put up story polls, make our plans available to other residents' objections and appeal. I'd love for AT&amp;T and Verizon to put up temporary cell sites in bright red that gave all the residents plenty of time to comment and appeal. Residents also don't have the benefit of a shot clock on their applications. Telecom says, "City should not set safety standards and instead rely on Verizon's assertion that it will design, construct, and maintain its wireless facilities in compliance." Residents do not get such freedom. We have to prove code compliance, and it is definitely not assumed or unverified. Verizon wants an exemption from noise restrictions during construction. Residents must abide. Verizon wants no fire safety standards. It says it will abide by building code, but the building code provisions have an exemption. I had to add Malibu to my homeowner's insurance because my gatecode box stuck out two inches into the city right-of-way. Yet Verizon objects to an indemnity obligation, refuses to obtain insurance, or name Malibu as an additional insured, will not provide a copy of its coverage because it wants to self-insure, claims it is confidential, and objects to a performance bond. In conclusion, the wireless companies want free, easy access without accountability or oversight. Their goal is to proliferate equipment to sell their products and then shift the risk to the public. They get the profits, we suffer the damage. Sound familiar, AKA SCE? Malibu must lead the way in saying this is unacceptable and will not be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Our next speaker is Susan Foster, and there were five people deferring time to her. There are Kim Heckman, Paula Murphy, Clyde Elaine, Beth Dorn, and Shawna Spreckman. Mayor Pearson, assuming you wanted to confirm that those people were present in the Zoom meeting, similar to our old rules where they had to be present in the chambers, I have confirmed their people under those names in Zoom.
Perfect. Let's move forward. Thank you for checking, because it's harder for me to see.
Good evening, Mayor Pearson and City Council.
Hi, Susan.
My name is Susan Foster. I was honored when Mayor Pearson reached out to me on behalf of Malibu, and Scott McCullough asked me for the community if I would help craft fire safety language. For eight months, we have worked to do precisely that. I am here this evening to talk about a sentence, a requirement, that will determine whether Malibu actually benefits from the fire protection provisions we have created or not. That sentence reads, "Engineering documents be prepared under the responsible charge of and sealed by a California licensed professional engineer." That sentence is an integral part of the fourteen-step fire safety protocol Tony Simmons and I outlined and presented to the city. And at its March first meeting, the Planning Commission recommended that the city council adopt our protocol. That sentence was omitted initially from staff's proposal that's in front of you tonight. And I don't know why it was omitted, but I'm very grateful it appears to be reintroduced, though Tony and I are unsure if this sentence was restored in its entirety. I hope it was. I ask you to keep this all-important sentence and adopt our complete fourteen-step fire safety protocol as recommended by the Planning Commission, so the protocol can be enforceable requirement and not merely a wish. I will explain what I mean in a moment, but first I would like to tell you about my commitment to Malibu. This is personal, and it comes very much from the heart. I spent over thirty years in California, and I have seen fire. I understand the terror of having to evacuate, grabbing a few things, and then spending days wondering if there will be anything left to go home to. Many of you have no home, had no homes to return to after Malibu Canyon or Woolsey, and that is heartbreaking. The Malibu Canyon fire involved three telecom carriers, AT&amp;T, Verizon, and Sprint. An overloaded Edison pole snapped in the wind, and the sparks ignited tall grass. As for the Woolsey fire, it has already been determined there is a telecom component. More details are coming, as Woolsey is still under criminal investigation. So I knew we needed a safety protocol for Malibu that makes you as safe as possible from the fire threats presented by each wireless communications facility in the city. The more there are, the greater the risk. We needed a higher level of engineering rigor to start preventing these fires in the first place. I asked Tony Simmons to lend his expertise to our team so we could fully investigate electric fire safety and find a way to introduce engineering design rigor and allow proper analysis for each project, as should have been done all along. Tony has decades of experience. He is a subject matter expert with expertise in electric fire safety and is accustomed to situations where the codes have exceptions. Tony has an unimpeachable reputation for integrity. His protocol does what is essential. He knows what is required. And he determined that since the code requirements have exemptions and thus engineering judgment is necessary, the diagrams and documents depicting the WCF design must be signed off and sealed by professional engineers at telecom before they are attached to an application. This sign-off requirement means the engineering design documents and diagrams have been reviewed and scrutinized by experts who are willing to stake their reputations and their careers on their signature and their seal. If they miss a design flaw and a tower catches on fire in the heart of Malibu, the engineer who signed off on that engineering document is accountable, and that's good for Malibu and its residents. Now that staff has replaced the requirement that the engineering documents must be prepared under the responsible charge of and sealed by California licensed professional engineer, our fourteen-step protocol is infinitely more meaningful and has a far better chance of protecting you and your constituents, which is our aim. I thank staff for restoring the requirement that engineering documents be prepared under the responsible charge of and sealed by a California licensed professional engineer. To be clear, our fourteen-step protocol for electric fire safety is about prevention. It was never intended to dictate to the fire department how we believe fires should be fought. Every cell tower fire is an electrical fire. Firefighters cannot apply water on an electric fire that has not yet been de-energized because they might be electrocuted. Our protocol ensures firefighters have all the options they need for any given situation and leaves firefighting to the firefighters. Some have questioned whether cell tower fires are real. They are. We recognize the data is not in on 5G because it is so new, but there is no difference between 3G, 4G, or 5G wireless facility fires when it comes to our safety protocol. Every cell tower is an electrical device, and at some point it will fail, and that is especially so given Malibu's corrosive marine environment. The electrical engineer's job is to minimize failures and then try to ensure that when these facilities do fail, they do not fail by starting a fire. The white paper Tony Simmons and I wrote for the Planning Commission and City Council offers examples of electrical fires that have started in cell towers across the country. In closing, I would like to show you an example of a fire that took place down in San Diego on March ninth. Alex, could you please start the video, and then I have a few more words to conclude.
Scary moment now in the South Bay tonight when a light pole with an attached cellphone tower caught fire. Our Phil Blower is here now with those details.
Yeah, Kathleen, this is very dramatic video. Take a look at this. Happened about seven thirty at the O'Tai Ranch High School Stadium. Chula Vista Fire officials say the tower collapsed onto the bleachers and rubberized track, causing extensive damage, but fortunately, no injuries. Crews had to wait for SDG&E to get out there and turn off the power that was feeding that tower. Once that happened, the fire was finally put out. Investigators right now are still trying to determine what caused this collapse. No dollar estimate yet as far as damages, but the story we're following very, very closely tonight. Kathleen?
All right, Phil. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Cell tower fires are real. One just happened down the road, and if you do not include all of our protocol, you increase the chances of having one here. The fourteen steps we outlined mean the difference between relative safety and yet another horrendous fire that devastates Malibu. Thank you for adding back our essential ask that engineering documents be prepared under the responsible charge of and sealed by a California licensed professional engineer. That is crucial. Please adopt our electric fire safety protocol in its entirety so that you know you have done all you can do to protect this beautiful city from another devastating fire. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Susan.
Our next speaker is Tony Simmons. He has five people who signed up to defer time to him. They are Suzie Sunwu, Robert Janis, Ryan Dorn, Carrie Klasby, and June Shanty Lauks. In trying to confirm these speakers, I've been told Ryan Dorn is on the same account as his wife, which is why we don't see him in the meeting himself. But Robert Janis, we don't have anyone by that name. We have a Robert, or a Robert Janku, or a Robert Ross. I don't know if you wanted them to raise their hand, or if you want- I don't know if you wanted them to raise their hand or if you want me to give Tony four extra minutes.
Um, yeah, impossible for me to see right now. Oh, wait, somebody raised a hand, but it's Lonnie Gordon. Um, um, I'm trying to thumb through this myself. I do see a Robert. Very tricky to see, to be honest.
Someone on an iPad has raised their hand.
Oh, okay.
Who raised hands?
My goodness.
You want to unmute them to see?
I asked even to unmute.
Yeah, I'm having trouble seeing them. I gotta change my view or something.
Let them go, Mike. We're taking more time to figure it out than they're going to take speaking.
Oh, you got a point there. Okay, I am completely lost. I see another person putting their hand up too. Let's just proceed at this point.
How many minutes do you want me to give them?
Uh, eight minutes if they need it. Less if they get away with less. Tony?
Yes, sir. I want to thank the council for this opportunity to speak. Could you guys put up section nine point eight of the ordinance? As I understand it, that's been revised to include the words that we asked for. I just want to, I want to see what I heard.
Adrian, can you share that slide with the change?
Uh, next slide? Uh, next one. That's the one.
The points, the points, the eight, the eight points under section eight are remained unchanged?
Everything else remains unchanged except for these two revisions.
Okay, and that is, that eight is section nine subsection eight, correct? I mean, I just want to make sure it's what I'm reading, what I think I'm reading. Is that correct?
He's looking.
It is section nine A.
Section, section, okay. Basically, I was actually, I actually come in at the request of Susan Foster uh, to get this in here and it's before you as a proposal. I fully support this, this change to the, uh, to the, to the resolution. That will, that will come in and that will be very important as you guys move forward because you have the, you have the substantial evidence that Ms. Koresh talked about. This is the highest level of, of objective data available on dealing with safety issues. So I fully support this and renders the rest of my presentation useless, so. I'm going to get back to the time.
All right, Tony, really appreciate that. Thank you.
I want to, I want to thank you for reaching out to Susan to help us, help us get you there.
I appreciate the education too.
Thanks.
Our next speaker is Scott McCullough. He has five people deferring time to him. They're Kelly Meyer, Cindy Crawford, Mitch Taylor, Lacy Lehman, and Linda Zilsky, and I do see all five of them in the meeting.
Great.
Okay, I hope y'all can hear me.
Yes, I can hear you, Scott.
Great. Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm Scott McCullough. I'm a telecom lawyer. Most of y'all have seen me before, so I'll spare most of the background. Good, you brought up the slide there. Thank you. Can we turn to slide two, please? You've seen this before. Um, and I wanted to just kind of reaffirm. The council started this process to craft the lawful ordinance that maximized local control so that you could keep your way of life the way you want to, while still not running afoul of federal or state requirements. A group of residents asked me to come in and help um, honor and implement your vision and mission statement and stay in clean while doing it. During all this process, we communicated, tried to work with the staff and city attorneys. The end product, well, my prepared remarks said ninety percent agreed. We just knocked off another couple of percentage points. I'm pleased with that. Um, and, and you know, we still got a little ways to go on a couple of other issues. I was going to complain a little bit about some of the things that happened between the Planning Commission and here. Um, one instance in particular, I found a little rankling. There were some unexplained changes in the proposed language from what we had agreed to and what Planning Commission recommended. And I got to tell you, some of it I still don't understand, nor do I really know why it's there. But I'm going to leave that for now. Let's get to the rest of the merits. The public has spoken about the product before you. These recent changes from staff tonight will help. But under that survey y'all took, we turn to slide three, please. Forty, um, forty percent were dissatisfied, and that's over eight percentage points more than those who were very satisfied or satisfied. That should be a red flag. It means something more needs to be done. Let's talk about what those things should be. Slide four, please. This is the summary of our points, and the first one there has been made moot by the change tonight. We're thankful for that. Um, I noticed, I think, as the slides went running by, that they also have proposed in a slightly different way to implement the battery backup application requirement. I haven't had a chance to review that specific language. I noted it's different than how we went at it. What we did was we quoted from the code and what it says should be in a permit application. We just use those words. It looks like what staff did was just cite through the code. And if they are citing to the same provision, then that may well suffice. Let's go to slide five. We, uh, as Nicole reminded you a little while ago, you know, the council began this process to address this rush wireless facility and allow you to manage all of this. And like we've kind of been saying already tonight, you're almost there. You know, there are just a few short things that needed to be done to make this complete. If you adopt our proposals and our recommendations, it's going to allow the residents to feel safer and know that you guys have done all you can to exercise proper control uh, within the confines of federal and state law. Let's go to slide six, please. This is just a summary of the bases for all of our proposals. You will notice that RF exposure is not in there, health effects is not in there. All of our proposals, each and every one of them are based on things that are expressly permitted by federal law and recognized to remain within local control. Soon after I was brought in, we discovered um, a new and almost overarching issue, and that's the fire electrical safety issue. We are now to the point where I think we've reached closure on that, and we're really, really thankful because, you know, I was going to come up here tonight and tell you that if you didn't do what we were asking you to do, there was going to be another fire and it was going to be on you. So I think we've avoided that situation and I don't have to go there. I do want to make one point about Ms. Koresh's presentation. She indicated that certain kinds of applications, eligible facilities requests, emergency generator applications must be approved. They are, shall approve, but in each instance and in particular, and especially with eligible facilities requests. The commission, the FCC, has recognized that local jurisdictions can enforce generally applicable safety requirements um, through, through codes and doing it the way that we're doing it. And so even with regard to eligible facilities and I believe emergency generator applications, our safety protocol can and should be applied. Let me scroll down now. There's a bunch of my stuff just got whacked out. Let's go to slide seven if we can. Um, this poll should tell you something too. It says that the biggest issue, the least desirable location, the place that everybody should avoid, is residential areas. The community spoke, protect residences and school. We addressed this in our Friday submission on pages seven to eight. Our main goal was to implement the public's will, as you've seen now, protect residential areas from extensive and unnecessary deployment. Our proposal was framed by way of a setback separation vote. And, you know, we've known kind of from the beginning since we started engaging with staff that, that there were some potential issues with that. That no matter what number you pick, whether it be fifteen hundred or five hundred, sometimes even fifty, um, it would preclude placement in commercial areas that abut residential areas. When, if there must be a facility, we want them in a commercial area. And so we've recognized that there are some problems all along with the setback approach. So what we've been trying to communicate in the last week or so is that, you know, an alternative is a presumptive residential ban. Uh, slides nine and ten give you a list of what other cities have done. Some of them have setback and separation. Some of them have residential bans. But let me be clear when I, what I'm talking about when I say residential ban. I'm not saying an all-inclusive forever ban. There is a waiver process in the ordinance. And if the wireless provider can show the denial of an application to put a facility in a residential area would constitute an effective prohibition, then that waiver should be granted. And, and so, you know, what we're talking about here is a general rule subject to an exception based on a showing of clear and convincing evidence based on the effective prohibition test. And during one of these proceedings, we can probably argue about Mr. Graham's point, whether, uh, whether the Ninth Circuit decision changed the Ninth Circuit precedent. I agree with him. I don't think it is. Um, I agree with Mr. Campagnelli, at least his ultimate conclusion. Um, I suspect however your attorneys think different because I saw what they filed with the Ninth Circuit in there on bonk reconsideration request in the City of Portland case. But nonetheless, that's not something we really have to decide today.
Scott, that was eight minutes.
I apologize.
That, that was eight minutes.
All right.
Thank you very much, Scott.
Our next speaker is Lonnie Gordon.
And can you hear me?
I can hear you, Lonnie.
Great. You know, I have to change my little speech tonight too because we've had some changes, but Mikey, Mayor Mikey, council members and staff, I represent Malibu for Safe Tech tonight, and you've heard from me for quite a while now, and I believe you know my feelings about this issue. I want to be respectful and not take more of your time tonight. But I do want you to know that Malibu for Safe Tech supports every speaker you've heard or will hear from tonight, I don't think there are too many more, in regard to amending the proposal presented by staff and BB and K, who seems to be pro telecom and tells you only what you can't do. We've offered our help numerous times from the beginning of this process, and although staff says they work closely with the community, I do not think that is necessarily one hundred percent accurate as evidenced by the survey and the omissions in this proposal. We at Malibu for Safe Tech echo the sentiments of all who have spoken in favor of adopting our experts' very reasonable recommendations. Please do not approve this proposal as delivered to you as it was, but with the new amendments that you, you got tonight. And thank you for your reasoned considerations of our request. Thank you. We appreciate your service.
Thank you, Lonnie.
Our next speaker is Jessica Isles.
Great.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Jessica.
Oh, good. Hello, everybody, and, um, thank you. And as everybody else has done, I have to change my, my talk too, mainly because I've been really inspired by everybody I've heard and humbled, frankly, the commitment, the intelligence, the research, and the education I've received on this subject. Um, is amazing, and I, I hope you all feel the same. I mean, anyone who says the city council meeting is boring, they haven't come to a telecom meeting, right? Anyway, um, the pictures don't really go along with what I'm saying, but I will address them. And they are really just a whole load of very ugly wires hanging down, ugly and unsafe. And really, the point of showing this is to show that the telecom industry is not going to do anything that they don't have to do, right? We already have lots of wires dangling everywhere. And if we don't make them comply with aesthetics or safety, they won't do it. No company will. Um, so, you know, having a look at these, these will proliferate everywhere. That's their goal. And our job as citizens and elected officials and people who are in service to this community, we need to make sure that we are guardians of what Malibu actually it's set out to be. Um, because they're not going to do it. And, um, I want to refer back to the very first speaker who was talking about a court who had ruled in favor of a city who had set out very clear hoops that these companies have to jump through in order to be able to be considered to install their small cell towers. We must have those hoops for them to jump through or we are unprotected. It is our job to keep Malibu special. It is special. It's one of the very, very few cities in America which has a mission statement that we have. It is quite incredible. And when you really think about that, you know, it's worth standing up for. And it's worth really going out on a limb and continuing to be a beacon of hope. Um, and with that, I'd like to just look at this amazing sunset. I was driving down PCH some time ago, a peperdine, and I pulled over to look at it and everybody else pulled over to look at it. You'll notice there are no wires, there are no poles, there are no nothing. Um, and in fact, that's actually what Malibu wants. We want to bury stuff. We don't want more stuff on poles. We want nothing. Look at that sun. And if we take a moment to think about how that connects us as a community, hopefully it will give us the strength to follow the recommendations that we have presented tonight, have the strength to go forward with that positivity. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
We had one more speaker sign up on this item after it was called Ryan Embry, but I don't see him in the meeting now, so that concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. And we're back here to the council. Thank you, speakers. Um, let's see if I can, hang on, I can't see everybody, so let me figure this out. How do I, I'm sorry, give me a second, everyone. I got people spread all over the place. Okay, one, two, three, four, there I am, five. Okay, I can see everyone now. Um, okay. Anyone want to go first? Paul? Oh, you're, you're muted.
Since we haven't done disclosures yet, I thought I'd disclose, and I'm sure it's no surprise to you, that I was extensively lobbled, lobbied by all the people who spoke today.
You, you don't need to disclose on an ordinance, just so you can.
It's a legislative item.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
You, you can talk about who you talk to freely as you want, but it's not, it's not a requirement.
If I don't need to, I won't do it. Okay. So.
Okay, Steve?
Okay, a lot of stuff here. This, and, and, and Adrian, going through the, this changes you've heard this evening, what are the ones that you feel you're going to be able to incorporate into this ordinance?
Um, that's a, that's a loaded question. I, I think we made.
We heard, I'm just, we heard a bunch of stuff. We heard, and I'm just wondering which of those we're going to be able to fit into what we're trying to do?
So, um, a lot of what we heard today are things that we did. So, um, a lot of what we heard today are things that we did here before this meeting. Um, and so we did try to make concessions. Uh, and uh, some of those changes that we're requesting, uh, in my presentation, uh, came from those discussions. At this point, it's really up to you.
Okay, so none of what you heard tonight, if you've made a list of and sort of said, these are the things we want to, we didn't want to put in, is that a fair?
I mean, we're, we're, we're down to, I think everyone agrees that um. We're down to maybe the last five percent of what they're asking for. So, um, and these, these items, um. You know, one of the items is again, having a greater setback or separation distance from residential properties. And my concern with adding any setbacks. Uh, from residential properties is that it's really going to preclude the ability for commercial properties to be used. Uh, this ordinance is for land that is not on the right away. So, um, we're, you know, and so we have to identify the areas where wireless could go. And I think, um, the only areas that we see, uh, that should be used for wireless is commercial. And so we don't want to limit the use of that. You know, uh, and then, I don't know. If Trevor or Gail have any other thoughts.
Let me, let me ask you a couple. I mean, some of the things we heard, Mark Graham talked about, you know, the, the requirement to put in proof that additional coverage is needed. Right? Some, some evidence from the telecom that they've done some kind of analysis that we can count on. That says, yes, I've really, and, and the only reason I asked that, I remember, and when I was on the planning commission. They were putting some telecom thing in the civic center down by Cross Creek Road. And the reason they gave us for, for putting another cell tower up there is because some person. From the telecom tried to drive through the shopping center and couldn't make a phone call. So that was the evidence they used to say, well, I got to have more here. I mean, I think, I, I, I would think we want to see something more substantial than that. Uh, if they're going to come back and do that stuff inside the city. So that was just one thing that I listened to. I said, geez, that seemed to make a lot of sense. Uh, we've got the professional engineer covered, right? That, we got that one covered. I think everybody said we get that one's wired. Battery backup. And I couldn't figure out when I, what do we do with battery back or backup on these top cell towers right now? What is, where's the city sit with that?
So, um, based on the planning commissioner recommendation, we did add a requirement for battery backup to be a requirement. Uh, where, um. Okay, you know, where, uh, the law, uh, you know, uh, permits it. And we also added the California Fire Code requirement, uh, section. Uh, that the public requested us to add.
Cool. Insurance, what do you think of the insurance request?
I think that's more of a question probably for Trevor or Gail. Um, there is an insurance, um. Requirement and the condition of approval that we didn't have before. I think they were asking for more money to be added to that and also to cover pollution.
Yeah, that's what I heard. There was the pollution thing that I think was the big one. And what do you guys think about that?
You want to speak to that, Trevor?
Sure, the, the, the pollution insurance is something that's new. The only place that we're aware of them doing it requiring here is in Encinitas. Um, you know, you know, I think the concerns there are about, you know, if it's, you know, how widely is it available and what the cost is that's involved with it. Um, you know, that is to protect against if, you know, the, if the industry gets sued for RF pollution and that causes. Uh, you know, cancer or they get sued and they go insolvent and that their indemnity, you know, provisions that they have in place with us. Somehow fall through and that somehow the city would then be sued, even though the city is strictly preempted from regulating RF, you know, emissions. That we would be held liable and then this insurance would come into place. That's, that's the, uh, the argument there.
What do you think of the argument?
Well, it's, 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 it's your decision if you want to add it on. It doesn't seem to be something that's necessary. It's something that would be put you at requiring something that most other cities don't require. And that, you know, there's a high likelihood it wouldn't ever be needed by the city because we have no ability to regulate RF. And it'd be, it'd be a strange for the city to be held liable for not regulating something that is preempted from regulating.
Sort of like that guy who's going after the city for signs on the beach that we have no control over, right?
You can never control, or somebody will sue.
Say, you know, just, you know, you never say never because you never know what's going to happen. So the, but are you guys opposed if we, if we suggest insurance, we should put that insurance policy in there? You get, is there any objection to doing that from, from your side or Adrian's side?
If, if you are going to put it in place, you know, I, I would suggest that you have provisions in there that would allow it to be waived if it's not available or if, if the, the cost is prohibitive.
Cost prohibitive from the chip, from the telecom side.
You know, I don't know what, I don't know. What the proportionality would be in terms of what the cost of, of that insurance would be versus, you know, what the benefit is and what they're putting in, in place there.
Scott also made a, a, and Adrian, back to your, uh, the buffer. Scott made it some kind of a recommendation that I didn't catch all of it in terms of language you could install. That dealt with the fact that some of these cell towers had to be located in commercial areas that were also close to residential areas. What did you think of his suggestion?
I think he said that there were, uh, two ways in which other cities are. Making sure that wireless facilities, uh, are, you know, far away from residential properties as feasible. One is through the setbacks. Uh, and the other way is through, um. Restricting wireless facilities from going into residential properties. Um, so.
I thought he was talking about some kind of a waiver that said that if. I thought he was coming up with language that allow us to deal what we wanted to deal with. That allow these things to go in if they were required in a specific instance.
Right, so it would restrict them from going into a residential zoning district. Um, but it's not a prohibition, uh, in that they would have the ability to request a waiver. Uh, that, you know, if they can demonstrate that it was the only way to provide coverage to a certain area. Um, that we would be able to, uh, consider the waiver requests and still in, uh, certain, certain, uh, situations, we would be able to approve it.
I, I mean, that seemed to make sense to me that allow us to use the buffer where we needed it. But if it fell into a situation that required something else, there was an ability to deal with that. At least that's how I, that's how I read his comment. Now I could have, this is, you know, it's above my pay grade here in some instances, but.
Well, like, like I said, I think he, he said there were two options. One is the buffer. And the second option was to just prohibit them from going into a residential zone. So those were the two options. Like I said before, the buffer unfortunately would not leave a lot of commercial, um, area available. So there is an issue with that, but not allowing them to go into residential areas. It might be something you may consider. However, there is language in the code right now that says residential is the absolute late, uh, last choice. And there's a special finding, um, that they would have to make, um, for, you know, property, for. Uh, projects that do go into residential property, uh, residential properties that it's not. That the facility could not be feasible, uh, cannot be feasibly located, uh, within, uh, other zoning districts.
Yeah, I got one last and I'll, I'll be done. You know, the, the. The request that says if there's an appeal, it should go in front of some elected official versus a. Hearing officer, when there's no definition in the code and the, and the resolution I could see. Is there what qualifications a hearing officer should have? We haven't really said, and we, we could, you know, I don't know what you put in it. But here's my thought. Okay, my thought is this is a new regulation. Right? And the, the, the residents are sort of our canaries in the coal mine. You know, they're, they're the ones out there on the street seeing what's going on. They've got, if anybody's going to complain, they're the ones that are going to figure out where the, the problems are and bring them to us. My recommendation would be for the first six months or nine months, I don't care, some timeframe. That we put together some kind, you know, two city council people and a planning commissioner, and they become this hearing group. And what that does, it gives us a chance to understand what kind of stuff is, what, what kind of appeals are coming in front of us. It gives us a chance to get a real good handle on what kind of a hearing officer we're going to need, you know? What qualifications is that person going to have to have to be effectively be able to handle these appeals? And, you know, if we find that the residents are sort of taking advantage of it and just appealing everything and just driving us nuts, we can always change that, right? You can always, you know, put the hearing officer in and say, okay, if you guys, but I think doing it, at least initially with some city council people. Will give the residents a, a sense that we really do care what they, what they think. And it will give us a chance to really understand what the impact of this ordinance is going to be. So when I get to the end, that's going to be part of my recommendation. And Mikey, let's turn it over to somebody else. I think I've taken enough time.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Uh, Paul, you had your hand up earlier.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think that the insurance is a no thinker as far as I'm concerned. Uh, they've, they've shown us that another community got insurance. Uh, I think we should require the insurance and if they want to self insure, then I want to see them making, uh. Having a bond for some portion of their, their huge net worth. So, which shouldn't be that expensive for them to do, especially since if Encinitas has done it and we do it, it's going to become commonly available in no time. The insurance industry will respond. So that's, that's one item I'd like to take off the table right now. Let's require it. Uh, can Adrian, can you comment on the, uh, the items they wanted in an application? How many, what's our application look like now? Are, are we adopting their, their fourteen items that they want to see in an application?
Uh, we're adopting, I think eleven of the fourteen. The only three that were not were, um. The three that were related to de-energizing the facility. One of them requires a signage required by the electrical code or the fire department and. Um, that signage is not a requirement, um, currently by either of those, uh, two. The second one is demonstrating the service. Uh, disconnected means shall be mounted at an elevation. Determined by the LA County Fire Department or Designee in conjunction with the electrical utility. Um, I mean, we can maybe change that since the fire department again is, uh, stating they will not. Be, uh, de-energizing the facility, but so if we can just say determined. By the, uh, electric utility, um, if that's something that the city council would want to implement. Uh, and the last one was a, uh, demonstration, there will be, that there will be instructions for de-energizing. The equipment by first responders.
If the first responders aren't going to be willing to de-energize and they're going to wait for Edison or whoever owns the pole to show up. Then I don't know how much of a signage they need, but we have to realize that. That the, the fire department isn't going to touch it, if that's what they think. I mean, I'm certainly not going to run up there and get on a ladder and try it.
I think the other option, um, would be to maybe require a sign that would have a telephone number. For the carrier and maybe the first responder would then call them so they can de-energize the facility. They would probably have to send someone at the side or, um, at their headquarters, um, de-energize the facility from there.
Okay.
Um, Paul, I see that Tony wants, has a, wants to.
Has valuable input, I'll bet.
It's up to you, you're, it's the floor of yours.
Tony, talk.
Yes, sir, um, the four, the three points that are related to, to, uh, disconnecting. Those being dropped does not bother me a bit. If, if, if the fire departments are not going to de-energize it, then there's, then. Other, other jurisdictions, fire departments in certain cases will de-energize without their equipment. But if their, if their policy here is not, then now those requirements make no sense. So if you're happy, I'm happy. Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, there's, um. I have no, I have absolutely no objection to those three being, being dropped. One of the things we didn't realize is that the fire department in Malibu is actually not the fire department in Malibu. It's, it's the county. We thought, we thought you guys that. The Malibu city and all the agencies would work together on this, and that was, that was an oversight in my research. Okay, so I apologize for that.
Thank you, Tony.
I yield the floor.
Okay, um, Karen or Bruce? Bruce? You're muted.
Sorry, if Karen wanted to go first, I'm sure I'm going to be a lot longer, so that'd be fine.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, okay, we're working through the list. I, I think I'm, I'm encouraged at how successfully. I think one of the issues that, that we could maybe define tonight would be the appeal process. And Steve talked about it, but. I know we used to have a communications subcommittee. Would it be worth talking about standing that up again? I don't know how long ago it disbanded. Does anyone?
About four years ago, I think.
Okay, I mean, that, that, that might be a way to look at this. Um, and, and, and if anything were justification for it, this seems like this, this would be the thing. You know, and, and. The setback requirement, um, I think we need to, we need to address that. Uh, it's kind of out there hanging. Fifteen hundred feet is, is, uh. Is what's been asked for by most people. I think somebody, maybe Craig Hill. Brought that number down a little bit to thirteen hundred. I'm not sure how much difference that makes. Um, and, and I fully understand we can't require something that effectively prohibits it. So I don't know if anybody has a suggestion for us to, to come up with a number or a range. Where we can hit. Hit something that works. Uh, I don't know, Adrian, do you have any ideas there?
Yeah, uh, we tried this exercise before just because we also wanted to come up with a number. Um, we actually created a fifteen hundred, uh, foot buffer and it encompassed the entire city. There was not a single place. Uh, we tried five hundred feet and it encompassed about ninety percent of the city. And so, uh, we kept bringing the number down and like I said, I think. Uh, even at fifty feet, um, it, it was, it was tough. Uh, and we feel like fifty feet is actually consistent with one of the requirements we already have. Um, which is the fault, fault zone requirement of a hundred and, uh, ten percent of the height of the pool. Um, we feel, uh, and that's for a freestanding facility. Um, and, and we feel like, uh, maybe, uh, that's. Probably, you know, we can get away with a fifty foot setback. Um, and, and still maybe allow some, some commercial, uh, land to be used. But going any more than that, unfortunately, it, it just, it just takes up all of the commercial. And the other issue with the fifty, and again, I'm talking about fifteen hundred feet from residential. Uh, the community wants, uh, fifteen hundred feet from parks, schools and playgrounds. So you combine it all together, uh, and you just have a bunch of circles kind of overlapping each other. Um, but with a five hundred foot radius and, uh, maybe, um. Alice can pull up my PowerPoint presentation. I had a couple of maps, um. At the very end of the presentation, we can show them. There we go. Um, just to give you an idea, uh, this map shows a fifty foot buffer from residential. And then it shows the, okay, so that's the fifty foot buffer from residential. And the one we were just looking at, uh, before, it shows that same buffer. And it also shows a fifteen hundred foot buffer from schools and parks. And as you can see from, you know, even if we reduce the buffers from schools and parks to five hundred feet, there just, there just isn't a lot of red left, uh, to be used for wireless facilities.
And I think, Adrian, one thing we could also explain was the concern that if we force the wireless companies into a waiver situation, then rather than going where we would want them to be, which is the commercial properties, they're gonna start looking at what's more advantageous for them. So if they're gonna ask for a waiver, uh, it's almost like a variance. If someone's gonna ask for a variance on their home, they, they'll ask to put not only the house on a slope, but also the swimming pool and the tennis court. Uh, it's a similar concern here where if the wireless companies are gonna ask for that waiver, they, they could be requesting a waiver now to go into residential areas because we took that option of commercial properties off the list. So we wanted to try to keep that option on the table as the direction to steer these and get them away from residential properties.
Well, and, and to also, uh, piggyback on that point, is that this ordinance addresses land, um, that it's not public right of way. And so, again, if you don't allow it for land that is not in the public right of way, then what you're doing is pushing them in the public right of way, which according to everyone else, you know, that might not be the most desirable place for wireless facilities, at least in commercial properties. There's ways they can put it on the roof and, 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 um, have better screening opportunities and aesthetics.
The argument being if you require the setbacks, then they just won't put them on the commercial facilities, and then they'll put in the right of way, which could be anywhere in the city. It doesn't have the restrictions that we, that are being applied to these facilities.
Does right of way include every street or just the highway?
It includes every, uh, public street. Um, so, uh, we do have some, very few private streets, but it includes every, uh, public street and the, and the highway as well.
Karen, were you done or not?
Yeah, I wish there was an answer for that one. Okay, yeah, I think I'm done. Thanks.
Okay, Bruce?
All right, no surprise, we're gonna have a lot of comments. You know, I read all these five hundred pages of material we were provided, and then all the supplements and all the letters. Uh, first question I have, um, this is off topic, this, but prob, the public right of way urgency ordinance that was adopted in light of these conversations and this ordinance, I wonder, is there a, a, it would it be beneficial to go back and look at that after this also? And see if we can incorporate some of the things that are in this, in that one. It's just a thought for the future. And I have some other comments, but I'll, I'll pick, piggyback on what Karen was saying. And by the way, I agree with everything, everyone, all of the, um, council members, everything I concur with. With the exception of the fall zone, I'm not sure why we need specific numbers for a setback and for a separation. Couldn't we have a descriptive standard such as no closer than needed to prevent a demonstrable gap in coverage with a clear and convincing standard for the application? That's a question. I, I don't know the answer to that.
If you, if you, if you may, I, I may be able to answer in, in part. Well, one, one of the concerns that we have in, in incorporating into any ordinance language like significant gap in coverage is that's, that's a court standard that's been developed, and it's subject to change. And so we prefer to use, uh, the federal law that then will be more, last over time, and that's the reference to an effective prohibition. Uh, the added complication, uh, when you're looking at sites in the public right of ways, there's also a state law franchise right to use the public right of way. It's not unfettered, uh, but, but that is an added complication. And, uh, in terms of demonstrating need, uh, carriers have argued, and it's somewhat unclear in the, in the case law whether they have to demonstrate need to use the, the, uh, public right of way. But we're talking tonight about, uh, outside of the public right of way. I just thought I'd mention that since it was, did come up a little bit.
Right, totally understand that. That's why I said that might be a conversation to, to reintroduce. Well, so let me say, I'm always impressed with the public presentations to the city council. And, and tonight, I think the public, you all outdid yourselves. Um, the combined presentations were organized, they were professional, they were informative, and they were persuasive. Uh, they, they were as good as any presentation I've heard by top-notch lawyers in a courtroom. And in fact, they're much better than what I witnessed on C-SPAN. So, you know, I, I applaud the public for the, all the attention that's been put into this and all the hard work that was put into making these presentations tonight. They were, they were spot on. So, you know, this is an incredibly complex legal issue. Um, I've practiced law for more than thirty years. I've worked on multiple complex matters. I had a difficult time getting my arms around the intricacies and subtleties of the telecommunications laws and regulations. So got no choice but to rely on the experts that are giving us help here. In that regard, we've received really good help, I think, from Trevor, from, um, Gail, and, and from Scott. And I found, I found all of the, all of these lawyers have been, have been willing during the past week or so to get into the weeds with me and to help me understand the intricate, intricate and complicated issues. So now, in addition to raising complex legal issues, however, there are important public policy issues here. Most important of which are public safety with an emphasis on fire safety, and to a somewhat lesser degree, but clearly important aesthetics. These are the, I think these are the two subjects that we need to be focused on. I think that was the focus of the presentations from the public. We are so fortunate to have an interested and engaged group of residents who've gone so far as to hire legal counsel to aid them with this. Um, Nicole sent written public comment on April eight, which was then joined by multiple residents, twenty-four by my last count, and it's backed up by legal analysis from Scott and other consultants. Um, Nicole and her group have raised multiple serious issues and criticisms, some of which have now been accepted, which I'm really glad to see. But they've been mainly with respect to perceived fire danger to the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and aesthetic issues, again, again, to a lesser degree, but not less importantly. We received helpful public comment from many other residents along with legal and technical consultants. And we also received public comment from a handful of residents who want to see more robust telecommunications and maldo. And we've received comment from representatives of the industry. I was surprised, actually, none of them showed up tonight to make a presentation. They argue that what we've done is too restrictive in multiple ways. I wasn't persuaded by their analysis, but I haven't actually, we, we haven't heard anything tonight from our advisors on that subject. I, I would say the recitals in this draft ordinance were very important to me, more so than with most ordinances. Usually I think of recitals as, as kind of just blah, blah, blah. But the recitals here tell a story that we can understand in human terms. And, and I know it's been a long night, but I, I wanna, I wanna read some of them so that we all understand what we're talking about. Recital B, the city of Malibu is designated a very high fire hazard severity zone. That's the entire city. And then it goes on to talk about the fires that have devastated our city. So we're, we're not like every city, you know, the most, the vast majority of cities in the country are different than us. There are some other cities in high fire areas, but we are, our city is a high fire zone. Recital C, cities retain the authority over decisions regarding the placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service facilities, subject to those matters where the authority has been limited or removed by state and federal law. And that's what we're focusing on tonight. What the authority we still have, obviously, we can't go beyond where the law tells us we can't, but we have authority in the areas of safety and health. In fact, I think that's what, as I said, D, the unrestricted installation of personal wireless service facilities is contrary to the city's efforts to stabilize economic and social aspects of neighborhood environments, to satisfy health, safety, and aesthetic objectives, to maintain property values by not degrading the visual and economic value of adjoining properties, especially in residential areas, and to promote family environments and a rural residential community character within the city to the maximum extent allowed by law. I think that's an excellent summation of what we're looking to do here and the rights we have, which, which are not all that cabin. And then last, well, not lastly, E, to protect the health, safety, and welfare, it's necessary and appropriate to provide for certain procedures, standards, and regulations relating to the location, placement, engineering, design, construction, and maintenance of these facilities. This is all within our ambit. We have the authority to do all these things. There, there's another one, a one through one I, which is important. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna waste everyone's time reading it. Now, the proposed resolution adopting the ordinance also notes the general plan policies and implement, and implementation policies include the city shall maximize the risk of loss from fire. We're, we're mandated statutorily to do that. And our vision statement, of course, which we've heard a lot about, the first, which is the first substantive ordinance of our zoning code. That's not just a platitude, it's a law. Provides that Malibu is a unique land and marine environment and residential community whose citizens have historically evidenced a commitment to sacrifice urban and suburban conveniences in order to protect that environment and lifestyle, and to preserve unaltered natural resources and rural characteristics. As I see things, anything beyond basic voice and text communications is a suburban convenience that we as representatives of the residents have an affirmative commitment to sacrifice on their behalf if we're permitted to, in order to protect the environment and lifestyle, and to preserve the unaltered natural resources and rural community characteristics of Malibu. And the mission statement provides further guidance for that. Now, when I ran for this, for city council, um, and even before that as a vocal public advocate, I repeatedly stated my policy preference to cabin development in Malibu to the fullest extent permitted by law, unless there's a clear value and benefit to the residents that's consistent with our vision statement and mission statement from varying from that policy. Um, although there is a public benefit to robust communications technology, it's not a benefit that's consistent with the vision statement and mission statement. We clearly need some, we need communications to protect again when we have fire, so we have to keep that in mind. But we don't need all of the, one of the commentators, it might have been, um, Craig, or someone else. We don't need for kids to be able to be playing video games in the backseat of their car. That's not a necessity in Malibu. So I favor legislation that limits the proliferation of this potentially dangerous technology to the fullest extent permitted by law. To be clear and to avoid any doubt, I don't support any regulation that's unlawful. I just support exercising our legal rights to the fullest extent that's consistent with and does not exceed our legal authority. And that should be our test, not what's fair to telecom. What is the limit of our authority? We should be exercising all of that authority. And just so the record's clear, I think we all understand that we can't regulate with respect to health issues. That's been preempted, and nothing that I'm proposing or anyone else is proposing is with respect to that. Now, just another general comment before I move on. Well, the planning commission adopted an approach that's largely, but not entirely, in line with the comments we've received from the residents. There were some things the planning commission didn't do that the residents advocated, but for the most part, the planning commission followed through with everything they heard from the residents. It's my understanding that the planning commission's approach is within the limits of our legal authority. I haven't heard our lawyers tell us otherwise. Now, the planning commission resolution says that they recommend that appeals should be heard by city council, planning commission, or another body appointed by city council. They recommend a backup power supply must be required for all new wireless communications facilities to the extent permitted by law. They recommend recitals that are substantially similar to the fire-related recitals proposed by the McCullough Group being added to the ordinance. And they recommended application requirements should be included in the resolution adopting the engineering, design, and location standards, including the fourteen requirements that were listed on page five of the memo we got. Uh, for reasons I don't understand and a lot of residents didn't understand, the staff came back with a proposed ordinance that disregards many of the key aspects of the planning commission's resolution.
Point of order, point of order. Bruce? I, I apologize for interrupting. It's plain that you want to read a prepared statement, but I would really appreciate it if you would just tell us what else you think we should change.
Well, I'm getting to that, Paul, but you know what? The, the statement that I have.
We all read the five hundred pages.
Excuse me?
Okay.
I, I want to talk about an important policy issue, and I have a number of questions then about the specific.
If you can move it forward, great. A lot of what you said we've, has been decided and discussed, and I appreciate it. But, uh, we should try and get to the meat if, as, as you can, please.
I would probably have been a lot further along by now if I hadn't been interrupted. Look, the city staff works for the ultimate benefit of city council, not the city manager, outside interests, or others. The planning commission is the body of experts that we have appointed to act on our behalf in the first instance for policy purposes. The planning commission's composed of residents who are appointed by us with expertise in that area and who know our policy preferences. I don't understand when the planning commission acts, how the staff comes back with different recommendations. It makes no sense to me. It's problematic.
Zendi, that issue some other times. It's not on the agenda right now. We're, we're trying to get through an ordinance. We have a lot of people waiting to see where we're going on that.
I, I suspect the people that are, that have, the residents that have taken the time and trouble to comment appreciate these comments. But any, our city staff too often acts on its own and not for our benefit, which is what they're supposed to be doing. All right, I'm going to ask questions. Fall zone. It's my understanding that that is the distance from the base of the, um, tower or other facility um, to the, to the space where there is a structure or other thing that could be damaged by a fall. So the original proposal from the, um, but both the planning commission and the staff was that the fall zone should be the equivalent of the height of the facility. So do the following. Put a piece of paper or create a house of cards, and then take a ruler, twelve-inch ruler, and put it twelve inches away from that facility, from that, that house of cards. Stand it up, drop it towards the house of cards. See what happens. It's not going to stop exactly at the base of the dwelling that it is exactly the distance from. It's going to go further. The fall zone must be more than the height of the facility. Now, there was a compromise at the last minute, a hundred and ten percent. I frankly don't think another ten percent is going to do it. I know that there are other jurisdictions that have a fifth, have a one point five, a one and a half times the distance. I understood from Scott, from a conversation I had, one point two or higher would probably be acceptable. I'd like to see that enlarged. Is there any reason, why was a hundred and ten selected? It just sounds like it was a spiteful thing that, you know, they're asking for a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty percent. We want a hundred, so we'll give you a hundred and ten.
I have an answer.
Yeah?
When I was talking to Mr. McCullough, he said he would be happy with a one-ten.
Not what he told me.
Okay.
Can we, can we go better, though? Can we do a hundred and thirty as a compromise? That's, that's a question I'd like to put to the council. On the liability insurance, Paul, I, I agree, it's a no-brainer. And I just want to make clear the, the insurance isn't for the city in case the city gets sued, although that is something it will help with. It's for the residents in case the telecom doesn't have the, um, the wherewithal to satisfy a major liability. So it's insurance for the benefit of the residents. And I can't think of any better way than to determine what the real risk is than to let the free market decide it. The insurance companies have actuaries that know better than anyone how to assess risk, and they'll set a price based on what the actual risk is. We don't need to determine what the risk is. The insurance.
I think we all agree with this, Bruce. Let's do something that might be controversial.
Paul, I don't know how you can say we all agree with it because you said that you thought it made sense. I haven't heard from Karen, I haven't heard from Mikey. I'm giving my two cents. Appeal fees, can we waive them in the cases of these kinds of situations? Can the residents be able to appeal a, um, grant of an application without having to pay, what is it, five hundred or seven hundred and fifty dollars? I'd like that considered because. I'd like that considered because it's going to be very expensive for the residents every time one of these applications comes forward if they have to pay that. There hasn't been discussion, I don't think, and I'd like to see it, of a line of sight issue. We have primary view designations in Malibu, but that's very limited. That's a very narrow corridor. I, I think that to the extent that it's feasible, these facilities shouldn't be able to be in the line of sight from any home to the ocean. Unless, again, there's some compelling evidence that it's absolutely required. That's not something that anyone has focused on. And I, I, so my question is, why not? Why don't we say that nobody's view of the ocean can be blocked by one of these facilities? Again, it's not a rhetorical statement, it's a question. Can someone respond?
I'll try. It wasn't addressed by the planning commission, and as such, it didn't end up in the, in the agenda packet we have. And so you wanna talk about making a new ordinance which has nothing to do with what was agendized.
No.
And we can do that, but we would have to agendize it separately.
No, just as we're not required to accept everything that's been recommended, we're not limited to what's recommended. In fact, you supported an insurance addition, which isn't in the proposed ordinance.
It was certainly in the record for the last, from the planning commission, and it was several pages in the five hundred-plus pages you talked about having read.
Okay, so, I don't know that we're going to approve this tonight. We may, we may send it back to the lawyers for further drafting. I am asking, what's wrong with adding, does it, what is the, what are the substantive objections? Not procedural objections, what are the substantive objections to adding a protection of the view of our residents, which I think is a critically important thing. Again, Malibu and other coastal cities are different from Omaha, Nebraska, Philadelphia, and other cities in the country. We, we have views of the ocean. We don't want antennas and towers and facilities sticking up into the people's views. That's my view. I believe there's a provision in here that allows the city planning department or some, or maybe it's the, the person who's gonna have responsibility for administering this, the discretion to lessen requirements. I've seen that discussed. I don't agree that any individual should have the ability, other than through the formal waiver or variance provisions, to lessen requirements. Maybe if I misunderstood that, I'd like to know it. But I thought there's a provision in here that expressly authorizes some individual to lessen the requirements. I can see giving our staff the power to expand requirements, but not to lessen the requirements that we're establishing by an ordinance. Is that provision in there? I think I read that in the public comments.
I think it is, Bruce. I think the planning director has the ability to provide a waiver. And I can't remember the exact instances, but there was something in there dealing with that. And, and you brought it up, and my concern was that anytime, if, if in fact that was to happen, I think the explanation that that waiver should go in front of the planning commission, so it was public knowledge what the heck we're doing. But I, I think there is something in there that allows that.
It was my, it was my impression, and I could be wrong, that this was, this went beyond waivers. This was more of an administrative capacity to lessen the requirements that would be applied in the first instance if it was deemed administratively convenient to do so. And if I misunderstood that, somebody can correct me. But that's what was explained to me when I had discussions with some people, and that's what I thought I had read in some public comments.
Did it have to do with the application requirements?
Yes.
I, I think, I think the, I can't remember. I think there's something in there that if it wouldn't apply to a facility, there's some discretion for the the planning director not to require something that's not needed for that facility. Adrian, can we find where that is?
And I'll point out you have Scott and Nicole wanting to chime in if you're interested.
Well, I have one last question, so then I'll, I'll cede the floor, even though I do believe it was inappropriate to have me cut off from making comments. There's a provision that says that if an application is deemed approved by operation of law, then the standard permit conditions of approval in such resolution shall apply to that permit. What are standard permit conditions?
Those are in the design standards resolution, right, Adrian?
So they're explicitly said, explicitly set out in the ordinance? It's a defined term? Because it was, it was not capitalized. Are you saying that's an actual, there's no discretion in determining what they are? It's set forth in the ordinance?
It's, as I understand, it's not in the ordinance, it's in the resolution.
So it's just a question of applying exact words that are in the ordinance to the permit that is deemed granted?
Yeah, I think it's section eight is the list of standard conditions, section eight of the.
It says, "All development permits or conditional use permits granted for wireless communication facilities submitted to seventeen forty-six shall be subject to the following conditions, unless modified by the approving authority." So they automatically apply these.
Okay, thank you. I, I always have a problem with referring to something that's standard when it's not defined.
Yeah, they call the standard conditions of approval.
Okay, so there is the question of whether there's some discretion permitted in changing the permit application or in reviewing the application that is separate and different from a waiver or a variance.
Yeah, it's the application requirements, I think. Adrian, did you find the language?
Still looking, yeah. I haven't found it yet.
Okay.
So for the benefit of other councilors, I, I don't think it's appropriate to grant our employees discretion to alter the conditions that are set forth in the ordinance. Thanks.
It, it's in three point sixteen point six of, I don't know which document I'm looking in, but it, it probably is in the ordinance as well. I'm on page twenty of twenty-three.
Yeah, in the ordinance.
Yeah. And it's the last sentence in three point sixteen point six A. "The director may waive certain submittal requirements or require additional information based on the characteristics of specific projects."
So I would recommend or suggest that we eliminate the waiver authorization. And lastly, I think we should provide Scott, Susan, Tony, and Nicole with an opportunity to fly spec the last-minute changes. Because I mean, you know, Tony wasn't clear whether the exact language was what was being recommended. We're all in agreement, it sounds like, where that the change ought to be made. The staff conceded that. But I think that someone ought to fly spec the language to make sure that the change is being, that's being described is actually being made, because the devil's always in the details.
If I might just make one additional comment on the application requirements and that waiver. One of the things that it's intended to address, which can be addressed in a different way, I suppose, is that for eligible facilities requests under federal law, there is a limited amount of, of things that you can require specifically for an eligible facilities request application. And, and so that would allow, that kind of waiver language would allow you to have a list of application requirements that is just the generic list and allow the director to waive things that wouldn't be allowed to be asked for, for an eligible facilities request. So another way that cities handle that is just to make a separate list of what they would ask for for an eligible facilities request.
That might be a good approach, but I mean, clearly, we can't require what the federal law prohibits us from requiring. But the waiver language is much broader than that and gives the planning director discretion to go beyond what you just described.
Do you have other language?
I would have no problem with saying that they could waive requirements that are prohibited by federal law.
Y'all, does that make sense?
Yeah, I think, I think so. There may be some, you know, there may be some disputes with, with applicants about what is prohibited and what's not, but certainly that would be more limiting than, but I do think that was the intent when it said based on the characteristics of specific projects. Probably what they were thinking of was eligible facilities request.
Okay, Bruce, are you, do you have another point? Are you done?
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, before I make my comments, Scott, I, I'll, if you could unmute Scott, that'd be great. I'd like to hear his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to respond to the Councilman Silverman's question. One of the things we were talking about was slightly different with regard to the delegation of the planning director. Not gonna ask you to turn to it, but if you look at the ordinance seventeen forty-six oh eight oh A, LIP three sixteen six A, and then what makes it really sharp is draft resolution nine A. Let me just speak to the last. What, what we are concerned about is the application content requirements. It's people who wanna be able to look at these applications. We want to have some assurance of what will be in them so that we can analyze. And the problem is, the, the ordinance, and I like to firm this up, but draft resolution nine A says that an application may contain the items in nine A one through eight, which by the way is a safety protocol. Our concern is that the planning director, when, when they're developing the forms and what must be required, they may just choose to not contain, have, or call for things like what's in nine A one two eight, the safety protocol. Now, that's a rather extreme example. But our position is that the things that are spelled out in the resolution should be the minimum application requirements. And then the director can have discretion to add and later amend other things that the planning director deems necessary and appropriate. But the resolution should be the minimum requirement, which the director cannot overrule. That was our point.
Thank you, Scott. That was what I was trying to articulate.
If I may, I, I'm not seeing the may in section nine A. I'm seeing that it says that the providers shall provide the information required by a separate application. If no form is available, then they must submit all documents necessary to acquire to make the necessary findings. Oh, the such information may include. Is that there, but that I think is, again, going to that point of that some types of applications, you couldn't require everything on the list. So, that's where you get back to that earlier point that, that you were making, Commissioner Silverstein.
Again, the, the, the overarching point is that our staff should have the discretion to add additional requirements, but should not have the ability to eliminate lawful requirements that are imposed by the ordinance.
Okay. It's getting late, so, but I'm gonna try and fire through my list here. And a lot of notes, but a lot of people spoke before me, so give me a second here. I, I, first of all, once again, like was already said, I really wanna thank all the speakers. Some real standouts I wanna get to quickly. Mark Graham, thank you. Kai Yang, really helps. A personal story really makes a difference. That was, well done. I really appreciate that. Linda Gibbs, such a great speaker. Really appreciate that. Susan Foster, Tony Simmons, Scott McCullough, Lonnie Gordon. Just thank you all for all your work and your words. I wanna talk about, I see, I see a problem that we're all trying to address, and that would be the appeal process. And the problem, and I had a long talk with Scott and Nicole, I think Janet was on the call too, about this issue, and we all agreed it was really tricky. Having the city council do it, as I think we've already seen, it has a serious issue. We can't, we haven't got through this agenda. We're not gonna get through this agenda, because we're done after this. So we, we have serious shot clock issues, and we have times when we're off. Second half of July, second half of December. Those are huge holes, which I'm pretty sure would be, you know, the industry might figure out. So, I have an idea, and there's been some other ideas here tonight, but the idea I discussed with Scott and Nicole. What, what would it look like if a company like CMS, who the community has asked to, to help us with looking at these, these applications? What about, I wonder if a company like CMS could look at them and help us process that, and then we put them fully visible on a public web portal so that the public could see exactly what's happened in those appeals. If it's a company that we believe in and trust, like CMS appears to be, it might be a way to solve this issue and not burden staff and not try and, and try and figure our way around the shot clock at the same time. So that's just a thought. I think we come back to this. The distance issue, the separation issue is really complex, and I think Adrian's maps pointed out how hard this is. And we don't wanna end up in a nonstop waiver situation, and it's really, really looks challenging when I look at the maps. I, I was hoping we'd come up with some great ideas here. And after seeing what Adrian showed us, we can see the complex nature of this, that it creates a real, a real problem. The one idea I have is can we have different separation between residential neighborhoods and commercial? And sort of find a way to define the borders where they hit, which is, I think, pretty much every commercial zone is bordered by residential. Maybe some sort of hybrid. I I agree on this insurance issue. I think that was well said. I thought I understood the fall zone at a hundred and ten percent to be adequate, because once again, we're, we're gonna get into issues of, around that, I suspect. Scott, could you, if possible, could you jump on quickly? Can we, can we mute?
There we go. Hello.
Hi.
In, in our presentation, we had given you an indication of what some other cities had done. And we explained that some had a hundred and fifty percent and some had a hundred and ten percent. And what we tried to convey was that, you know, this is what other cities had done, and they were good examples. One hundred and ten percent is probably at the very bottom, the very bottom of the zone of reasonableness. It may be adequate depending on the circumstance. But, you know, quite frankly, we would like to see it a little bit more than that, maybe a hundred and fifteen or a hundred and twenty. It, it really is a matter of judgment for council. But, you know, our whole point was, look, you know, this is what other cities have done. It's kind of within their zone of reasonableness. It cannot be only one hundred percent.
Okay, thank you. Ken, stay on a second, Scott, if you could.
Yes.
I'd like your opinion on what Mark Graham spoke about as far as having to prove that you had a significant gap coverage. And the reason that worries me in Malibu is because of our topography. And that's where the fifteen hundred feet, thousand feet, five hundred feet also worries me. We know that the topography makes a difference. So I'd, I'd love to get your take on what Mark had to say in relationship to the court cases he pointed out.
Yeah, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this upfront. I, I very strongly suspect that your legal counsel is gonna disagree with what I'm about to say.
Yeah, and I'm gonna ask Trevor also, so I'm not.
Soon after the Ninth Circuit panel rendered its opinion, I filed a writing with y'all that said that the significant gap test remains alive and well in the Ninth Circuit. And I remain of that opinion. I think that if you read the panel opinion very closely, you will see that they basically just interpreted the FCC's new test, or what the FCC spelled out as its test, the Ninth Circuit. The Ninth Circuit panel said that it's really no different than the Ninth Circuit precedent. Now, many may disagree with that, but the way I read that opinion. Yeah, I do not read that panel opinion to overrule the circuit previous precedent, which was a significant gap test. Now, having said that. When you look at what has actually been proposed in this ordinance. To be candid. We kind of danced around that issue. And as a practical matter, that is something that will just, under your ordinance here, it's before you with the green language. Will probably have to be fought out in the first couple of applications. The the language. Says that in certain circumstances, the applicant will have to show by clear and convincing evidence. That it is facing a effective prohibition as defined by federal law. And it leaves it at that. And so I can imagine in a proceeding, people will be able to lay out their legal theories about what the federal law is in this circuit. And specifically whether the old Ninth Circuit test remains or whether the the way the FCC is trying to steer it to be the case. Now, you know, I'm hopeful that I'm in one of those applications. And I get to deal with the wireless provider and build a good record for you so you can make a decision. I think your current words are adequate.
Say that again?
I think your current words in the ordinance before you are adequate to preserve that issue for later development on a case by case basis.
Okay, Trevor, do you have comments on that?
Sorry, I missed the the original question. I was trying to put together some language here.
I was trying to understand or get opinions on what Mark Graham had to say about proving significant gap in coverage.
I I would, you should probably pass that to Gail on that one.
Sure, I'm happy to answer that. So I think I mentioned earlier, and I think Scott has said that he takes the same view. It because there is some uncertainty about what test might apply for an effective prohibition, it's best to stick with the language that's in the federal law. So that's why we we use that language and not any specific test. The one issue that. In particular, that I want to take some or express some objection to in what Mr. Graham said. Is that he was proposing, as I understood it, to have an application requirement that the applicant demonstrate that there would be a significant gap in coverage and least intrusive means. The there are two problems with that. One problem is that that would would require an applicant to submit. It would require you to decide what is and if what is the appropriate test for an effective prohibition. So it kind of undermines the whole point of of just using the federal language. The second thing is that what we have adopted or or what we have structured here in your ordinance is that you set certain standards and requirements. And then you have a process for asking for a waiver. If the if the applicant can demonstrate that there should, that there's an effective prohibition. If you put in your application requirements that every applicant has to demonstrate an effective prohibition, then basically you're asking every applicant to submit the requirements for a waiver.
Well, could, and that's actually one of my questions, Gail. Could you just quickly walk us through the waiver process and what that entails?
Sure, so the waiver process, I just want to pull it up here. So you you've got an ordinance and resolution that have certain standards. Basically, your development standards and location standards. And if a an applicant. Finds that one, as they're developing their project, finds that there are one or more standards that they they feel they. They compliance with them would create an effective prohibition or otherwise violate an applicable law, then they can make a waiver request. And and so the waiver request is really intended to be a means for an applicant to say, in my particular project, if you require me to meet this or that standard. That I and you would deny my application because I could not meet that standard. That would create an effective prohibition of personal wireless services or otherwise violate applicable laws or regulations. And and so that's that's one way of requesting a waiver. A second one. Is if there is a technical or design reason that's described in. For a design reason specified in the resolution. And so that's more like a feasibility kind of an exception. And or waiver requests in the and then the request for a waiver can only be granted if they demonstrate through clear and convincing evidence that the standard for the waiver has been met. And that the waiver, if approved, will be granted only on a case by case basis. So there's no general waiver out there. You can't waive for, you know, all applications. It's case by case and narrowly tailored so that it's that the requirements of the chapter, the standards in the city council resolution are waived only to the minimum extent required to address the request. So in that case, say it was a waiver of a height requirement. They couldn't ask for, say, I'm just going to make up numbers, but say the height requirement was limited to twenty-five feet. They couldn't ask for fifty feet if they really only needed thirty-five.
Understood.
Mikey, can I come up on that for a moment? Question?
Okay.
You know, I thought an effective prohibition didn't mean that a particular application can't be granted because there are going to be applications that ought not to be granted. But that it meant that as a matter of process, because you've adopted such onerous requirements, there's nowhere we can actually put up our facilities, period, in your in your town. You've 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 stripped us of the ability to have any application granted. That's an effective prohibition. I didn't think it meant that you, every time you apply, you get to say, hey, if you can't grant me my application on this one that I want to do, you're prohibiting me. That's exactly the point of making an application.
If I may answer that, there are two ways that that you can have an effective prohibition claim. One is that it it's a facial claim. Basically, you've crafted an ordinance that there's no way anyone could ever. You know, put a facility and you've effectively prohibited because of the way you've crafted your ordinance. But the other way is that it is with respect to a specific application. And that's actually how that Ninth Circuit test developed, where they were looking at on a fact, kind of factual basis. This application can't meet such a such a standard, a height standard or whatever it is in that community. And in order to get to not have to meet that standard, they had to show that the that particular facility was needed to fill a significant gap in service. And that this was the least intrusive means, meaning least intrusive to the values of the community. So it was effectively waiving what the standards were in the community in the least intrusive way possible.
Right, but so if 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 two neighboring buildings that are a hundred feet apart from each other, one has a facility and the wireless company comes in and says, we want to put a facility next door. And you've got a two hundred foot separation requirement, and there's no gap in coverage whatsoever. The next door neighbor is getting the full benefit. They would be able to argue that they're effectively prohibited because you're not letting them put another facility in next door?
Well, they could make that argument, and then the question would be whether they have actually met the the proof. And so that gets to two points. One is, what is the test that would apply to show that there is an effective prohibition? And that's where there's some uncertainty in the law at the moment. And the the second is that if they can, if they can show it, then yes, they they would be allowed to to build that facility. If you were to deny it at at the city level, then it may be that they they would make that effective prohibition claim in a court, and it would be adjudicated in the court.
Sorry, Mikey, thank you.
No, no, that's it's, this is complicated. So I'm, okay, it's getting late. I know a couple of things. Everyone wants to try and put this to bed tonight, and it's going to be tough. I'm going to start trying to put together some motions here, and I'm going to ask city council for help. I do want to mention one thing first for the community to know. I think I told Scott and Nicole and Janet. But. At a recent A and F meeting. That subcommittee. Is recommending, when we go through our budget process, a substantial expense to map. G I S map all the current facilities in the city of Malibu. More than map them, photograph them and check on their permit. Find out which ones are there, which ones aren't there anymore. Basically, clean up the entire thing and build a database that we can then keep up with as we go forward. So we actually have a clue what's going on with the facilities in our city, which for a variety of reasons, we don't at the moment. Mainly because. Telecom doesn't really do a good job of detailing a lot of these facilities, as I understand it. Often their locations or addresses are wrong. Often, they might have have a facility there that's not permitted or is in disrepair, as we've seen. The photos we saw today show some of the things that would come up from that. So really, I think that's going to be very helpful as we go forward with our our wireless. Ordinance and enforcement to have that. Now to try and put together some motions here. I think we agree. On requiring the pollution insurance in the same sort of vein as what Encinitas has done.
I have language if you.
Oh, I'm looking for language. I'm looking for help here. Absolutely. I got, I got notes absolutely everywhere right now, so.
I think I think you could do that by adding the following to standard condition twenty-five, which is in the resolution. And you would add, the policy shall not have a pollution or other exclusion, which excludes injuries or damage from E M F slash R F exposures. And Adrian, if you can pull up how that looks. So it would add on to the current insurance provision that you have in there and then prevent it from having that exclusion.
Do we know what the Encinitas statute says?
It was. This is the language that was suggested by the McCullough group is is adding that, you know, they had a a different limit on the insurance itself. So that that part of the insurance provision was, you know. Was was put in place through this condition. And then this would be adding the language to. To prevent them from having a pollution exclusion. And if you want to bring them in to to look at how that looks. You can too.
Okay, we.
Is our language as strong as the Encinitas language?
No, no, no. Why aren't we just using the same language?
I don't know. What do we have for the Encinitas language? This is the language that was proposed by the McCullough group. That was where we got this from.
Yeah, we can bring that up. I know it's hard to find in five hundred pages of documents. At eleven twenty-four at night.
I'm sending the condition to Alex, so maybe Alex is able to.
Oh, I see.
Pull it up on on his end, but it is condition. Twenty-five of. Of the resolution. And I can find out what the page of that is.
All I'm saying is we, somebody has put together a language and it appears to be strong language. And why why are we trying to recreate what somebody already got?
Yeah, if we if we duplicate Encinitas, they're a town of sixty-three thousand people, larger than us. I looked it up. So it seemed to be a fairly good model to look at.
I don't have the Encinitas provision. If we have that somewhere.
It was sent, I think, the actual agent that issued it, there was a letter in the public record somewhere on that.
Was it copy of the policy, I think? I don't think the actual provision was sent out as to why, how you would require it. But I think I think McCullough recommended taking, having the, removing the pollution exemption.
Yeah, if we could show that language.
Be able to send it to him already?
Yes.
Hang in there, Adrian. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Even went out.
Oh, Alex and his magic. Here we go. Oh.
It'll be the last sentence, which is the new part that's added on.
So what we have currently is exactly the same except for the last sentence?
Yes.
Okay. Then I guess my motion would be there.
I'll second that motion.
Are that a part of it? And then I would say.
Mikey, let me just, why wouldn't you, why wouldn't there be a more positive statement that says the policy shall have? On the shall not have way. Never mind. Keep going, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, it's fine. I would say, listening to staff and listening to Scott, why don't we make the fall zone? One hundred and twenty percent.
Good. Okay, I got no problem with that.
Okay. And then it gets, then it starts getting really tricky. I am completely baffled on the separation issue because. It appears that the more we push the separation, the more we push people to the public right of way. Or push the companies to the public right of way, which is probably not exactly, from the photos we saw today, the look we want. So it's kind of a damned if you do, damned if you don't, it looks like to me. I appreciate any input on that right now because I'm I'm totally stuck on that issue.
This'll help me understand whether that's going to happen or not. Gail, things like the insurance requirement that we're adding that we just discussed, can that be put in the public right of way requirements as well, or is that something that can't lawfully go there?
The insurance is for everywhere.
Yeah, I would say that the we haven't had any comments from the industry on that pollution exclusion because it was never in a draft ordinance. But but, you know, we may hear from them when, once it, if it does get adopted. When when they're actually looking at applications. I would just not, I also don't know if Encinitas, although they adopted that, whether they've actually put that in in any permits. So I can't really answer if it's unlawful or not because it's it's a new requirement I haven't really seen put anywhere.
Let me, let me ask it differently. If if it's lawful with respect to the non right of way, would it be still? Would there be an argument that it's unlawful nonetheless for a right of way?
I I can't see a reason under state law or federal law why it would be different.
The the reason I'm asking that question is it seems to me that we should, we shouldn't be concerned. I could be wrong about this, but we shouldn't be concerned about pushing to the right of way by virtue of adopting requirements that we think are appropriate here, because we can go back then and deal with the right of way statute again and use the same kinds of issues there. So long as we're allowed to be, you know, symmetrical in in what we do, there may be things we overlooked when we did the right of way one as an urgency ordinance that we need to go back and put and fill in the holes, and this is a good time to be figuring out what those holes are. So I I wouldn't be overly concerned that if we do the right thing here, we might. So I I wouldn't be overly concerned that if we do the right thing here, we might push them somewhere else. If they get pushed somewhere else, we'll go stop them there too if it's inappropriate.
Be comment on that, Trevor or Gail?
Not really. I I I I had understood uh your comment, Mr. Mayor directed more at the concern about the uh spacing requirements or the setback.
That that was actually what I was talking about.
No, I understood that, but isn't it the same thing? If a separation requirement is permissible with respect to non right of way facilities, we can impose the same separation requirement with respect to right of way facilities. It's for the same reason.
Not, I would say not necessarily. Uh because there are differences in terms of of what you might be able to apply or the arguments that might be made uh with respect to a separation requirement in the right of way. Um that it that there is a state franchise right to use the right of way. For example, so it might not be exactly the same as insurance. There's nothing in state or federal law that that directly would 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 touch on insurance. It's going to be a reasonableness issue, I think, in a.
But if we're. But Gail, if if we're exercising our police power to protect the health, safety and welfare of our community and we're also exercising our authority to protect the aesthetics of our community, why couldn't we use that same power with respect to the right of way?
You you can. I'm just saying that there will be different arguments that might be made just based on as as that kind of a separation requirement might be applied in the right of way.
Yeah, I I don't understand.
Tends to be, for example, um smaller uh powered facilities that that serve smaller areas, for example. Uh oh, and that that they have a franchise right to use the public right of way. So uh I'm just saying that there could be different arguments made.
And Paul, you had your hand up?
I'm just from a from a a practical point, I'm I've come to the conclusion that nearly all of them are going to end up getting located in the right of way. Uh there are some that are going to be on commercial structures, which is great, which I think is what we want. Uh and we can, you know, I don't think that we have any residents who are going to offer their backyard up for a location. Uh there may be one out there, but I don't think there's a bunch of them. So all the other in the residential areas, we're going to see them on right of way. So I think that, you know, you we gotta, we gotta make the points where we can. And uh I think the fire safety rules and the insurance rules are great. And I think that we can put whatever separation numbers we want in there. But I think the end result, no matter what we do, is going to be, they're going to be in in the right of way. So I I don't see another solution.
Do you have a recommendation on what that separation distance should be?
I I heard tonight fifteen hundred, I heard thirteen twenty, I heard a thousand. I don't really care. So let's go with thirteen twenty. Craig needs a win tonight.
I'll support that.
Trevor, it looked like he wanted to had a comment. I could see your.
What? Yeah, what are we? What are we talking about? A a thirteen hundred setback from?
No, it's not a setback. It's a separation.
Separation between uh between.
Between facilities.
What do we have? What what is uh the the current language on that, Adrian?
You're muted.
You're muted, Adrian.
Excuse me. I believe it's uh five or six hundred feet. I can verify.
I think it's five hundred.
I think it's five hundred.
Five hundred is.
Okay, well, moving from five hundred to thirteen hundred would probably have a pretty significant a a effect. But if if that's the project that forces more of these into a waiver situation is the is the flip side of it.
Exactly.
I should also mention, it says five hundred feet, but it does exclude other existing wireless facilities in on uh along P C H. So those those separation restrictions do not apply for facilities that are in the public right of way on P C H.
Right, everything gets pushed to the right of way.
Right.
Okay, so.
So we're not entirely going to win on all on this. That's 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 for sure.
Okay, so what's the the consensus on uh the the setback from other facilities?
I'll I'll go with what others recommend. I'm lost on this one, to be honest. I see both sides of it. I don't know the answer anymore.
I I think one point we also have to make about separation is that uh you may be thinking of separation uh from um another wireless from the same carrier. However, we do have multiple carriers in the city. And so um it would be very difficult to provide a separation uh that would be, you know, more than five hundred feet uh due to the fact that, you know, there's A T and T, T Mobile, Verizon, uh Net Nexty Networks or Crown Castle these days.
Well, that that brings up one of the notes I had. Can we, we're, since we now have fire standards, safety standards and in in our in our code, does it make sense to try and co-locate so we do have more separation? Or is that just keep the ugly on in one area and ignore others?
Um depends on what we're talking about. For co-locating on uh land outside the public right of way, you can certainly do that because there's more space for that. But co-located in the public right of way is very difficult because of uh utilities are not designed to have more than, you know, more than what they're designed to have. So typically you'll have existing wires connected to it. Um you may be able to uh attach one wireless facility and meet the separation distances from for those cables. But then to add another one, it would um often require the pole to be uh significantly higher, which causes what they call a T P effect, because you will have one pole that will have the power lines much higher than all the adjacent. So they end up having to replace a bunch of poles to accommodate for that. So um so it's less uh feasible in the public right of way.
And then we have.
Records for uh co-location for what we're dealing with here, which is the non-public right of way. I already have that in there.
Yes, there is a, yes, uh there's a a statement that co-location is it is um most desirable uh options.
We're already going to be pushed towards doing that.
Yeah.
And then we have A B. I think I could be confused if it's either A B five thirty seven or S B five fifty six, which is going to open up all of our other poles potentially if it passes and we will be fighting that um street lights, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, okay, so I guess we're mostly down to we're down to um the appeal process.
I was like, what was the consensus on separation? Were you going to increase it from the current five hundred feet? I figured you want to keep it there for now.
I thought Paul proposed it to be increased and that's where we're headed.
Let's go with the thousand instead, okay?
Support that?
Okay.
The truth is, we don't really know.
Yeah, I was gonna say, right?
Some of this stuff, we're spitballing.
Let's do a thousand and see where it takes us.
Sounds good.
If we have to bring it back, we'll bring it back.
Right.
It's a tricky one. Um and then the last thing is the appeal process. Several ideas were brought up from city council to planning commission to a ad hoc to or or a subcommittee to C M S. So we have a a number of ways to try and deal with this. Um respecting that the hearing officer is very unknown at this point. I I hope that all all of this, uh whatever we decide on, all ends up the one part I would like to see fully visible on a public web portal, so the public knows what's going on. Um and Paul, I Paul, I see your hand up.
I like the idea of outsourcing it to C M S. And uh we can, we can take turns being on that with them. But I think that probably they'll then end up with a more competent uh and knowledgeable thing by outsourcing it to somebody like C M S.
You're going to. We, the the problem with C M S is that if they're if they're going to be serving as a hearing officer or somebody that's going to be making a decision on it, then they can't be working on the application.
Oh. Well, then somebody like C M S.
We we can bring in consultants like C M S and have them interviewed by the council. You can choose who that officer is, if somebody with a background like that, uh or someone approved by C M S, you know. Um there's, you know, we had to find what people are out there and that person would be brought to the council for them to, you know, consider.
Right, and to the community that wants the city council to do it, there's there's, I think there's just there's real issues with that. We need to be able to act quickly. Um we meet twice a month at best on very full schedules and sometimes we only meet once. And uh I think finding a system that allows us to move fluidly and quickly makes a lot more sense. But yes, Bruce.
Yeah, well, C M S or a a consultant makes has a lot of appeal to it. I wonder how expensive it's going to be though, if they have to act on all these applications. I like, I thought Karen mentioned earlier, re um forming a telecommunications commission. Wouldn't have to be a five-person commission. It could be one or two or three at most people. And that would be people that are selected by the elected elected representatives. I think that would be a fair compromise and they could act with greater facility than we could.
And the issue there I'd point out currently that involves extra staff. Um our staff being pulled to that and then you have to notice those meetings, I would assume. So it's 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 doable, of course, but I don't know if this is the place we'd want to do it. I was hoping we'd eventually get to environmental commission.
Well, do we have any idea what a what a consultant who's going to have to act on all these applications is going to call?
That's a problem. No, we don't. Maybe the motion then is to uh reach out for bids and bring that part back while bringing the rest of it forward, so we're not waiting.
So you could keep this language how it is and then uh staff can go and and bring in um an R F P or bring in candidates about who the hearing officer would be and then the the council could choose. And if the council decides that that doesn't like these options, then we can bring back the ordinance to amend, you know, the appeal process.
I don't like that because it leaves the hearing officer in limbo for as long as it takes to solve that.
Well, either way, we probably have to do an R F P to do an outside person because that's.
But we could have a a some, we could have a process that's more that's more amenable to the community that is the default until we change it, rather than have the process that people don't like and the planning commission recommend it against until we change it.
So, okay, I'm a little reluctant to maybe, depending on what it is, set up a new process that'll be around maybe a couple of months. How long do, how long typically does an R F P have to be open?
I mean, how long would it, I don't know, Richard, maybe you you, how long do you think it would take to solicit some people or Reva? Great.
Hi, yeah, it it depends, um but we usually leave our R F Ps open for about four weeks.
Okay.
Well, could, can we provide in the statute now a um a date by which it will change to whatever it is we we're changing it to as opposed to leaving it open-ended?
Well, if it takes four week, if it takes four weeks to do the R F P, I mean, you still have to do a second reading and then it's thirty days before the ordinance comes into effect. So you could have this office, hearing officer selected before the ordinance becomes effective.
Let me ask you this. Let's assume that we do what we 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 follow the path that says we're going to have this. Uh we're going to get an R F P and we get to the point where the ordinance is ready to go. We don't have somebody lined up to fill the R F P position. Can we change the ordinance at that point in time to make it a city council person has to be available to do these appeals? Can you do that?
You you can, of course, uh you know, amend or change the ordinance, you know, if if you want, like, you can set this for, you know, uh adoption.
I'm just trying to make sure that if if we go down the path that says we're good, we want to look up, we want to do this R F P guy and we don't find them and we're down to the point the ordinance is ready to go and we need a an appeal person to do that. Can we make a decision that says we want to take a city council person and a planning commissioner? And for the next month, you two guys are going to be the appeal pro program. Can we do that?
You are you, yeah, will you, I guess what would probably be in a situation there is then you would probably want to put through an urgency ordinance, you know, that would become effective immediately to make that change. If if uh there's an appeal that needs to be dealt with and the shot clock's coming down and there's no one in place, then that would probably be, you know, the.
That works.
As long as we get a way to accomplish that. That's all I want to make sure that we don't leave ourselves hang and dry.
Trevor?
Yeah.
Is it possible to have adopt an ordinance that says that the city has the option of either having a committee of members of the city council and planning commission or an outside referee to run these things and give us the option on an ongoing basis that we can change at a moment's notice?
You know, that's a great idea. And what you do is you could state that, you know, uh because only the 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 uh tier one appeals that will be held by the hearing officer. And you could state that be held by a hearing officer or um three members of the or, you know, uh, you know, whatever you want to set, you know, or or the city council, if so designated. Um we could add some language along those lines if you want to have, you know, an option already built into the ordinance. Would would you what you I I would you want it to go to the city council? Or you're saying you want to have it delegated to two members of the council and a and a third person? Or just what what is your thought about what that fallback would look like?
I my fallback would either look like one member of the city council, one member of the planning commission and and maybe one technical person, additional technical person so that there's three people.
You may want to just do it with, uh, you know, as a fallback, you can make it, are there two members of the the council on one of the planning commission or two of the planning commission, one of the council? Because I don't think we have someone, you know, that's going to have the technical expertise on staff right now that's not going to be working on these applications and.
Okay.
The conflict issue.
Right, and is there any conflict be with it being heard by the planning commission and planning commissioners or city council people who are actually, you know, uh appealing these things and maybe turning them down?
Well, these these tier one uh decisions for these appeals we're talking about are things that don't go to the planning commission. These are eligible facilities, co-locations and small cells. That's that's the universe of those.
If they get appealed to this group and then the 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 resident still says, I don't agree with that, I want to bring it to the city council. If somebody from the city council is on that initial appeal group, they got to recuse themselves, right?
Well, it the these, the 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 final decision would would be made by this group of three and then the.
It never goes to the city council.
There's no appeal to the city council from that three-person group.
Because I still think the city council problem remains on timing because it could just take too long.
No, it's not the full city council, but yes.
All right, are we good on that, Bruce?
I just just spitballing some other possibility that might satisfy this. What about any any two members of the planning commission as designated by the chairman from time to time? Chairperson.
Well, I I I think the idea is that this is a a fallback, right? If 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 I have a hearing officer can't be in place, right? And so then you'd want to take an affirmative action by the city council to actually appoint these people. So that it's going to be set up that there be a hearing officer that's, you know, the council, those going to choose and hire that person. Or if we run to a place, I think the concern from, you know, uh council member hearing was that we we'd be stuck, you know, having to come back and take an urgency ordinance and and um the mayor for a time suggested that, you know, we have a fallback so we can just say um the hearing officer or two members of the of the planning commission and a member of the city council, so designated by the by action of the council. So then, you know, until there's an action by the council designating those people, it would go to the hearing officer, but.
Let's do that. Let's just, right, that.
That would work.
Yep, that's good enough. I think it's good enough. Okay, so I think we have all of our motions right now.
No, I think there's one other issue unless I misunderstand. It's it's the last point of the planning commission proposals, which is the fourteen requirements listed on page five of protecting Malibu's future document. I thought they were left out, but I.
Susan Foster's points, yes.
Eleven of them were in there and three, because of de-energization, were not. So I think we're 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 done there. We're, as I understood it, we're completely good.
Could we get confirmation of that from Scott or 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 someone who had proposed them?
Uh.
Maybe I just misunderstood.
I think Tony, wasn't it Tony who said that we were good?
Good, yeah, Tony.
I thought he was only focusing on the engineering design requirement.
No, he was talking.
He's the fire guy. Well. Well, he's an engineer too, but, right, Adrian? I'm correct on that, right?
Correct. He's the co-author of the fourteen uh, requirements. And he was asked, uh
Oh, he's sitting right there. Tony, can you unmute Tony?
Yes, yes, sir.
So Tony, there were fourteen, and you suggested we could leave three of them off, is that correct?
Yeah, there were three, there were three, there were three related to the, to the concept that first responders in some cases might want to de-energize the equipment to fight the fire, and that's not the policy with Los Angeles County, so those those requirements really aren't applicable, so if they were dropped, I would not object.
Were you sat, were you sat by the other eleven were there?
Yes.
Ones with, the, the critical ones are there.
Okay, thank you.
Cool, okay.
Okay, so I think we're ready here.
Yeah, Scott McCullough has, did he have anything he wanted to add before we vote? Scott had his hand up before, or he, I guess he's done.
Maybe he fell asleep.
If he fell asleep.
No, I No, I'm, I'm still here.
It's only like four AM in Texas.
Raising my hand to say the same thing to Tony just
Okay, so Scott, based upon the stuff that we're just going to vote on, you're happy with what we're doing?
Well, I mean, I always want more, but I understand what you're doing. Um, if, if I had a chance to lobby, we could come back to the residential area, but um, I think, I think y'all need to proceed to a vote.
Cool, let's do it. Mikey?
So uh, Trevor, you're going to need to put together our motion here?
Yeah, give me a second here. Um
No pressure, just get it right, okay?
Yeah, don't screw it up, man.
I, there was one other issue I wanted to see you had talked about earlier, was uh, proposed by council member Silverstein, and this was about the submittal requirements. And um, whether you wanted to have the director the, the thing which say the director may waive submittal requirements or require additional information based on the characteristics of specific projects. Or if you wanted that to read, the director may waive submittal requirements if required by law or required, or require additional information based on the characteristics of specific projects. So do you want that language, if required by law, added?
Sounds good to me.
Bruce, what do you think?
Actually, I, I wouldn't say, I, I, I like the idea. I wouldn't say waive requirements if required by law. I'd say waive any requirements that are contrary to law.
You okay with that, Trevor?
If, I'll turn it to, it's sort of if required by law, if contrary to
Weave any requirements that are, that are prohibited by applicable law.
All right. All right, let me, we read now, the director may waive certain submittal requirements if prohibited by applicable law. Is that, is that the language? Would that work for you?
Say that one more time?
The director may waive certain submittal requirements if prohibited by applicable law.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Okay.
And that would, and that, okay, then, I, that's in three different places, so I have them ready. I think we can, we, we can
Let's hear it.
Put this through.
Is, is there any practical danger that people's view of the ocean is going to be obstructed by a, a facility the way we have this now?
It, it's still going to be under our building requirements, right? If you're going to have something over eighteen feet, it, it needs a CDP, it would still, you know, fall under those requirements, right, Adrian? So it, it shouldn't be different from what we have right now, in terms of view blockages of those type of things.
Okay.
Okay.
Wait on, Trevor.
All right, here's my, here's my shot at it. It believes the motion that you're looking for, based on what I've heard tonight and the consensus that everyone has um, come together on, would be that you would be looking for staff's recommendation, including the changes presented by staff in the presentation by Adrian Fernandez. And then uh, the fault, the uh, falls-on requirement is increased to one hundred and twenty percent. The separation from other facilities is going to move to one thousand feet from five hundred feet.
Right.
And then in seventeen point four six point oh three oh E one C, which is dealing with the hearing officer, it's going to define the, it's going to say that the type one appeals, or give you the language. Um They, it should be administrative hearing officer, or if designated by action of the city council, two members of the planning commission and a member of the city council. So that would be who is dealing with the type one appeals.
Cool.
And then section seventeen point four six oh eight oh A, LIP, section three point one six point six A and E, the last sentences of all those three read the same currently, and we will insert the language, if prohibited by applicable law, after the beginning of sentence, which reads the director may waive certain submittal requirements.
Yeah.
And then we are going to add to standard condition twenty-five in the resolution that the policy shall not have a pollution or other exclusion, which excludes injuries or damages from EMF slash RF exposures. And I believe that is the sum of the uh, the, the changes that you're proposing to the staff recommendation. Is that the version that anybody wants to make?
I think we moved. I think we did good.
Hey, who's uh, so you, uh, Paul, you're making the motion?
I'm making the motion.
I'll second.
Karen is a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Then I, I need to read the title of the ordinance.
And then you'll read the title of the ordinance, then we'll have a roll call.
All right.
Thank you, Trevor.
And that is ordinance number four eighty-four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Malibu determining the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. But this is, I'm sorry, this is, I'm reading the, um, it's not the corrected version. Here we go. Ordinance number four eighty-four, an ordinance of the city of Malibu amending chapter seventeen point four six wireless telecommunications antennas and facilities of the Malibu municipal code and making conforming amendments to section seventeen point six two oh four oh A six, seventeen point oh eight oh four oh D, seventeen point one eight oh three oh E, seventeen point two two oh four oh M, seventeen point three oh point oh three oh D, seventeen point three two point oh three oh A, seventeen point three six point oh three oh B, seventeen point three A point oh three oh B, seventeen point three A point oh three oh C, seventeen point one eight point oh two oh E, seventeen point two two point oh two oh D, seventeen point two four point oh two oh A, seventeen point two six point oh two oh A, seventeen point two eight point oh two oh A, seventeen point three oh point oh two oh A, seventeen point three four point oh two oh B, and seventeen point three six point oh two oh C, zoning text amendment number sixteen dash zero zero five, and amending local coastal program local implementation plan sections two point two and three point si- three point one six, chapter thirteen and appendix one, table B permitted uses, local coastal program amendment number sixteen dash zero zero seven, amending the wireless facilities regulations in the city and finding the same exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Okay, and that captured, do we stray into any other areas, or you got them all? I think you got them all.
Yeah, you adopted the proposed staff recommendation with the changes made, and I read the, the title of the ordinance. You're also adopting the resolution as part of this as well.
Yeah, well done. Uh, roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Gresanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, I want to, I want to thank the public greatly for all their help and input in this and caring, and I want to thank the staff for a very late night and for all your hard work. You guys really, really worked hard on this, and um, I want to make a, a motion to adjourn.
Got it. And again, thank you to public. Public did a great job. I mean, you guys made us smarter. Thank you.
Much, much better.
Mayor, do you want to continue the remaining items?
Yes, of, yes, uh, yes, that goes without saying. Please continue the remaining items and I don't know till when, exactly. I don't know. As soon as possible.
Motion to adjourn.
Date uncertain, or is it to the next meeting? You need to
I mean, I want to say the next meeting, but I have a feeling the next meeting's packed, so we're going to have to figure this out. Um
Could I ask that they be continued to the next meeting, because they've all looked pretty brief?
Okay, next meeting. Thank you, Karen. Well said.
Mikey, great job with formulating those motions. That really helped solidify it, and I think we have a good result here.
Team effort. Thank you, everyone. I wish everyone a good night, and thanks again to everybody.
And we're adjourning in memory of Mike Trainon.
We are adjourning in memory of Mike Trainon and the four individuals that also lost their lives recently on the highway.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.
Or good morning.